Welcome to the planning board meeting for Monday, July 11, 2016. Thank you to HKM for recording this meeting. We're missing two members tonight, so they'll need to look at the tape and the video to be able to vote on the three public hearings that we have before us tonight. The first one will be 151 Hayden Row, which is a special permit with lots with historic structures. Then at 7:30, we're going to start the site plan review for the new elementary school, which will be a big thing, and that's half the paper that's in front of us right now. And then we continue on at 8:45 with public hearings for Legacy Farms. So we have a very full agenda tonight. We've also got a bunch of other smaller stuff that we'd like to try to get through tonight. So let's try to stay on the point, and we'll try to get through tonight, make a lot of progress, hopefully. Okay, first one, and I assume that you want to continue even though we only have seven members tonight?
Continue?
Well, no, you want to continue?
Proceed, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we'll reopen the public hearing for 151 Hayden Row Street, lots with special permits with historic structures. We have one big issue, I think, is really remaining with it, and that is what we decide to do with a historic restriction on that piece of property. And we have the chairman of the Historic Commission here also, so why don't you join us up here for the discussion, because it's going to be kind of critical. I think where we're at is, in order for this to, it qualifies on all the material aspects of what it has to be, there's been a letter, certificate from the Historic Commission, et cetera. But the real question that I think is before the board is what kind of restriction goes on to the property. This is really setting precedent in that it is the second one of these, and I can imagine a lot of folks would might want to be carving one and a half size lots or one and a half size frontages, you know, up. And that's why I think the board members were interested in having some kind of historic preservation restriction. The board also got a letter from Claire Wright, our former member, who basically said, "What good is it if you can tear it down in a certain time?" And so I don't know whether we forwarded that-
The board didn't receive that letter, I think just the chairman did, so I didn't-
Okay.
I didn't copy that for the board.
And we also received a version from Doug, but unfortunately, your revision had one of these wonderful lawyer, "Do not distribute" talk across the bottom of your email, so I didn't-
I don't-
Yeah, it had attorney client for much.
Wasn't, wasn't, oh, that's a standard-
I know, but we were nervous about-
Okay. Mr. Chairman, can I just speak for a moment?
Sure.
Doug Resnick, Phil Tadaro, Phil owns the property of 151 under the name of Water Fresh Farm LLC. Two weeks ago, Ken and Jen and Mike were kind enough to meet with us and talk basically about the restriction. The restriction I had originally provided was one that would timeout at some point unless renewed. What Ken and Jen seemed to say to us was that the Historic Commission should decide what kind of restriction is okay. I revised it to be more, to be a perpetual restriction, and Mike had suggested that, you know, we don't want to create another historic district. We want to have a restriction that operates to protect the exterior of this house from demolition or serious renovation without the approval of the commission. So I redrafted what Jen had originally given us, and we met with some of the Historic Commission last Thursday. And the members that were there, I think, seemed to approve the redraft, which is now perpetual, to address Claire's issue, and really serves, I think, as a good template for the board in the future. There was no restriction applied the last time. This was, there were two other lots created. We are not changing one thing about the physical layout of the property. It's going to be Water Fresh Farm, and it's going to be Phil and Donna's house. Mike?
So, speaking on behalf of the Historical Commission, which had an open public meeting without a quorum last Thursday, so I'm not, I'm not too clear exactly if I can, if I can say we reached a conclusion. What I can say is the discussion revolved around the following issues. A, the Historical Commission's intent is to preserve the house, the historically significant house that's there. It's, it's consistent with a lot of the mill houses in the town, and we think it is part of the character and fabric of, of the town. So our intent is to do whatever we can to preserve this house. We believe that the proponents recommending subdividing that property will help preserve that house, that we truly believe that. The second point is that the Historical Commission wants that house to remain on that property. However, we don't need to be overseers of minor renovations. We don't need to replicate the historic district's governance over paint color, modifications, minor. All we want to do is make sure the house is there. The only question that came up after Doug and Phil were there was, was if, in fact, this is a special permit, and it allows this lot to be subdivided from the other lot, if for whatever reason the house is demolished, is there a way to not by right allow them to build the same sized property? In other words, we don't want someone to take advantage of subdividing a property with an oversized FAR and take advantage of that by subsequently demolishing the property. So I don't know if there's a way to say that, look, if, in fact, the house is demolished for whatever reason, you know, whether it's demo by neglect, whether it's fire, vandalism, if it is, if it's removed from the property, is there a way that that lot then would only be capable of building a facility that fits the size of the lot? And I don't know if the proponents would accept that, but from our standpoint, that's the only concern that we have, is we just don't want someone to go ahead, use this clause to preserve a historic property, and then whether them or subsequent buyers choose to try to circumvent the intent. So we're, I, speaking for the Historical Commission, we, we think this is a great opportunity. We'll see a lot more. I can tell you from the listserv I belong to, Mass Historic Listserv, the towns east of here have tremendous pressure in terms of demo and rebuilds. You guys know that probably better than I do. So I, I think this is a great opportunity for us to set a good precedent. The only issue is that we just want to make sure that going forward, it is for the intent that we envisioned.
Yeah, absolutely. And we tried to write this thing for exactly that purpose. Mike had given us this guidance a week and a half ago, and we took it very seriously. The idea, and Jen put this forth in her memo, is that the 81P plan that's going to be endorsed, the deed from Water Fresh LLC to Phil and Donna of the parcel on the plan, and the preservation restriction have to be recorded at the same time. And if everyone reviews this, you can see that there's a prohibition against demolition, there's a prohibition against any kind of substantial renovations or change, and that's what we were asked to do. I happen to think that this would be a good template for the future when, when a similar application arises. Again, the one that's already been dealt with had, really did separate off small frontage and so forth from the other lot, lots. We are doing nothing of the sort. We're just creating this lot, leaving Water Fresh Farm exactly as it is, and I think the restriction accomplishes what the Historical Commission asked us to do. And Jen's memo sort of says, if we do this all at once, we'll be okay. And certainly, nothing is allowed until this stuff is all on record, which we all, we totally agree with.
Okay. We have in front of us a marked up version of what it is. Jen, do you have any comments on that?
I have a question about why number 10 was removed, the notice of proposed sale.
Oh, yes, and we discussed that at the Historical Commission meeting. There was a case several years ago, many, well, it's more than several now, where a town official was asked to comment upon a buildability zoning type issue and gave advice which was deemed by the owner, the then-owner of the property, not the future owners, to have chilled his ability to sell the property. It was, it was, and the result was a significant judgment against the town. So all we're saying is, we'd prefer not to have anybody, no offense, Jen, not you, not Ken, not anybody, other than the attorney who's going to have to, who's going to review the title, say what this means. And I, part of it is in our own interest in being able to, in being able to deal with the property in the future, and part of it is genuinely in, along the lines of avoiding possible litigation for the town and exposure to enormous judgment.
So my only objection to that is, you know, there's been situations where there's been, you know, deed restrictions for various things on properties that have been recorded at registries of deeds, that people have not done their due diligence when they purchase the properties, and then find out that things are attached to their deeds, and then don't want to follow what they are supposed to follow, or then they, and I'm not saying it will or won't happen in this case, but I'm just trying to protect everybody at every angle.
Well-
So that's why, if you put that in there, that's just another layer of protection, where you, all, all we would do is just hand them this and say, this is-
If that's, if you want, if you want it to be written that we would hand you this-
Well, that's all it says.
I can live with that. I cannot live with any kind of discussions by anybody purporting to be a town official and expressing any opinions about the nature of the restriction.
What if we wrote, "Ten, the grantor shall make potential buyers aware of this restriction."
Perfect.
Something-
Shall give a copy of the restriction-
Grantor shall provide a copy of this restriction or disagreement-
It's a restriction.
At the time of signing, purchase, and sale.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Other than that, I think the changes, as I've read them again this evening, probably fine. The only one that little wishy-washy to me is number four stands for review, and I understand your concern about the Secretary of Interior stands for treatment of historical properties. And I understand, and I'm not saying that we do the back to that, but the commission shall be guided in its decisions by the goal of maintaining, protecting, and preserving the exterior of the premises in order to protect the architectural, cultural, and historical integrity thereof.
That's what's in bylaw.
The current question is, Mike, do you guys understand what that paragraph means?
Well, I, I think it's paraphrasing. I don't take exception. It could be rewritten to be a little bit stronger, because if you look at the exact language of the bylaw, it uses not the word exterior, but structure. So I would, I would prefer that the word "structure"
Yeah.
It's fine.
Be inserted in there. The intent is-
Makes sense. That's fine.
Is the facility as a whole.
Perfect, Mike, thank you.
Presenting the exterior-
Structure.
Cross that out, preserving the structure.
Right, the structure is-
In order to protect.
More dramatic.
Makes sense.
Other comments, questions from the public?
I still don't understand, excuse me, the premise of breaking it away from the existing law. You have covenants here that will prevent any buyer from destroying the house, according to what it says, so it's irrelevant whether it's attached to the lot or not.
Through, through the chair. The only protection that exists now for this house, Vincent, is if we were going to demolish the, the house for any reason, would be that we would be bound by chapter 125 of the general bylaws, where the Historical Commission would say again, this is historic structure, and there would, at most, there would be a six-month demolition delay.
Correct.
This prevents the structure from ever being demolished or changed.
That's my point.
And it's in perpetuity, it's in perpetuity. The structure now is combined with a business, Water Fresh Farm-
Correct.
LLC. They're all owned by the same thing. Phil and Donna were required to do that, okay, at a point after they had owned this property by, you know, on their own for many years. So all we're doing now is separating the house from the rest of the business, and with this restriction, that will protect the structure of the house forever.
But I'm saying with this restriction, you don't need to separate. You could sell the property just as it is.
Oh, no, no. We have other reasons that we absolutely need to separate it, that we've explained previously. It has to do with the financing of the property and the ability of Phil and Donna to refinance free of the loan that's on-
The settlement.
Yeah, on Water Fresh LLC, to refinance their own home, separate from that financing. It's critical.
Okay.
Is there, through the chair?
No, just the property was purchased as one parcel, and now you want to break it away.
Well, a large part of it's, a large part of it's been sold to the town already.
I understand that, but that's, that was a whole different situation. This is, this is now the opportunity to sell this property off. If you needed the cash, you could sell it off.
Yes, we could, subject to this restriction.
Correct.
That would be perpetual.
If I could speak as, as an interested party, I, I think that from our perspective, we, we're concerned that if any third party were to purchase, that, that the house could be susceptible to being demolished. And Doug's right, you know, we, we have no more than a six-month restriction.
Current.
Current.
Disagreement would change that.
Yes, exactly. So we're encouraging, we, you know, this is doing exactly what the Historical Commission wants to do, not only here, but elsewhere in the town. So this is fostering our goals and objectives, so.
For the chair?
Yep. Just, just wanted to say, I think it's a quid pro quo where you guys are getting the ability to split the house and business separately, and we're getting the ability to put restrictions on historic homes, so I think-
Which is what the statute, the bylaw provides.
I mean, that's what I'm seeing, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, I think you're seeing a perfect, quick question. You've got selectmen signing for this?
Typically, the selectmen are the chief executive official of the town. They would be required to sign any real property interest that the town would have, which this would be.
Okay.
So that's why.
And I just, I agree.
If I may, through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a question for the chair of the Historic Commission. In April, we discussed this, and Mrs. Wright, of course, a former planning board member and a historical committee member, she noted that she didn't think the bylaw was designed for this type of situation, and that's kind of the opposite of what you just said. In reading from the minutes, it's the current wording, to stop prevent demolition of the property, stop for permanent benefit, blah, blah, blah. That's what, we are putting that in.
You are correct in both statements. Claire was the author of the original bylaw. It wasn't her intent to use it in this way. As now the chairman of the Historical Commission, I don't, I don't see where it's a conflict of interest to use the bylaw in this way. I, I think it does exactly what we want for this town, is another opportunity to preserve a historic structure. It's as simple as that.
It's a little bit different than what I think everyone approved it when we did it. We might want to have Zach relook at that. I don't think this one is as grievous as somebody that might be trying to divide, I'll say, a 350-foot lot into two building lots, you know, or-
Mr. Chairman, just, just again, for the rest of the board, there is, on 112 Hayden Row, which is the first time the statute, the bylaw was employed, there is no restriction whatsoever with respect to the historic structure.
I understand.
The quid pro quo is different.
Yeah, we got, we got out of 1440s.
So in April-
No, I, I agree.
If I, if I may continue. In April, we had pretty much an understanding that Mr. Tadaro was open to a restriction on the preservation of the home, and that is not to be demolished and things like that. So we, we're not really going over new ground, maybe from a different angle now, I don't, I don't know. But Claire did point out that the intent of the bylaw wasn't for this kind of situation. It was more for-
Mr. Chairman, that petition was withdrawn.
Can you allow me to mean?
That, excuse me, right. Mr. Chairman, the petition was withdrawn.
Talk about the same bylaw.
We have, yes, of course. I don't know what the bylaw was designed for. All I know is that we are, we are proceeding exactly as provided in the bylaw.
Okay, that's enough. We, we were ready to vote, I think, or get going on here.
There's just one quick question.
Go ahead.
And this, this falls under number three, you know, talking about some minor, you know, just the conditions about doing changes to the exterior and appearance of the house. From my understanding, you can make any changes without getting any approval from anybody. Does that mean that you can change the color of the house? They've been misreading this.
Well, minor, yeah, it's, it's listed as minor, so.
So they can paint it day-glow orange?
They can, they can paint it day-glow orange, absolutely. And, and you know what, the way we look at it, the Historical Commission, is, are they doing anything that's reversible? If it's reversible, God bless them. They want to paint it day-glow orange until they're ready to leave, at least it's got a coat of paint on it. I, I know that's maybe a cavalier attitude, but, and I think if you look at the national, the guidelines for preservation, interior standards, they talk about that as well, that if things are reversible, there's a lot more tolerance. If things are permanent, changes to a historic structure, that's an issue. But if it's, if it's a paint color, if it's anything that's temporary, it's, it's not a concern of, of mine as the chairman of the Historical-
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, I'm not even, we, we also submitted an appendix, which, Jen, Exhibit C, which lists what is minor, and a wholesale change of color is not something we can just do on our own. We'd have to go to the commission. Touching up paint, fixing paint, fixing siding, fixing windows, fixing doors, those are the things that are listed as minor. We'd still want to go before the commission before we painted it day-glow orange. That's your favorite color, right, Doug?
Mr. Chairman, I have one question. Earlier, we said that precedent, right, I just wondered, what precedent are we setting here?
I think the, in general, the precedent we're setting is that if you want to do this, you're going to get a historic preservation restriction period.
So it's not a bad precedent at all?
It's not a bad, I don't think it's a bad one.
Okay, well, I just want to articulate that, because I think, to your point, Mike, it's going to come up again, right? Now, I'd like to set a blueprint in place that makes it easy for everybody.
For instance, I would like a guideline for people that are going to develop properties to understand there's an opportunity, they don't just have to go out and quickly get a demo permit because it's six months they want to start building, which is what happens today, because some developers just, they, they don't know what their options are, so they go ahead and-
Go to the easiest options out there.
And that's all in the bylaw, too.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. In order to do this, page two of Jen's memo, we changed the condition, it's half in the middle of the page, it says, "Prior to recording of 81P plan or within six months of the date this decision, whatever comes first, the historic preservation restriction on the exterior structure," that's the change, "of the historic house, will be recorded." I'm also deleting the, as approved by the Historic Commission, because basically, we're approving the memo tonight. And then, no building or demolition permits should be issued to the prior, historic home prior to recording the historic preservation restriction. So basically, if we're going to bring a vote here, we have to make the following findings, that the lot contains a historic structure, is situated in a lot for which the application has been submitted for approved, not required, plan pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41 and 481P, and the house will remain its present location for that section. Lot is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of zoning bylaw 210-117.2, Section 3, with the above condition and the historic preservation agreement. So basically, we'll find it, our finding is it's in harmony with the above condition and the historic preservation agreement. The board has given due consideration promoting the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare in the issuance of this special permit, encourage the most appropriate use of land, and does not permit a building or use that is injurious, noxious, offensive, detrimental to the neighborhood. And so then, basically, I'm looking for a motion to make those findings and include the, the condition that we just talked about.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
I hear a second. Further discussion?
Discussion.
Yep.
Again, I'm a big fan of Water Fresh Farms, but this lot is too small. I would love to see this house being listed with the Historic Commission, but I think the reason that it's being done is purely business-based, and I'm sorry, I don't think this lot is big enough to be separated this way, and then I'm thinking of the next owners down the line, where the planning board, we're looking, we're out for the future.
Mr. Chairman.
And I'm saying, my comment now is that there's, there is not enough parking, there's not enough frontage, and I, when you say neighborhood, there's going to be a new neighbor there in some time in the future, and I don't want to see problems happen if we prove this now.
Further discussion from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, just briefly, Frank, we've been blessed to have you serve on a number of committees. You don't make decisions based on how you feel and how you think and so forth.
Actually-
You have to have legally tenable reasons to vote for or against things.
I think that I, there is none of frontage.
Actually, half the, half the homes between the high school and Chestnut Street have less acreage and less frontage.
We're looking at this lot, and I think it's a good idea to split it.
Well, that's, you do need six out of these seven votes here today. And also, assuming in the, the memo was that the changes we made to the preservation agreement are also assumed to be, is part of the-
We would have those to you tomorrow, Jen.
Thank you.
So, I think you're ready for a vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
Nope.
And anyone abstaining? So I think it is six to one. Two people not voting because they're not present. Okay, look for a motion to close the public hearing on 151 Hayden Row Street.
So moved.
Moving second, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries.
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, board. We also have the 81P plan, the Mylar, and the application, and the check. Should we process with Jen?
I don't think that.
Thank you very much, folks.
Do we do it at the next?
Unless you want to do it right now.
No, no. It's up to you.
No, I-
Next meeting?
We can go after it.
Yeah, we just can't do it with a town clerk. We'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
I can come by tomorrow and find out if it's going to-
Yeah, if we could do it short, soon, that would be greatly appreciated. We have to deal with the letter.
Yeah, so it's just two weeks, what?
What?
Two weeks, you move it early as soon as you can.
No, I'm wondering if my-
On behalf of the Historical Commission-
Thank you very much. To do it after the public hearings, Jen.
Well, we have to stand to some town clerk first.
Okay, let's, let's get the decision written, and then, then we'll see if some of us will come to sign it. Okay, we are just about ready to start at 7:30. While we're waiting for those guys to come in, I'd like to approve the minutes for April Any comments on the minutes for April 25th? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 25th.
So moved.
Moving seconded. Are you guys ready for vote? Yes. All those in favor of approving the minutes for April 25th, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Thank you. Who's leading the- Okay, uh, who's leading the, uh, the school crowd today? Mike?
Mike?
I need just quickly to set up a projector.
Okay. While you're setting up a projector, we're going to continue to do a couple other minor things. Um, let's see. Yeah. Yeah. Jen?
Yeah.
Has, has it been determined that we don't need to appoint John to the open space committee because his appointment lasts forever?
His appointment lasts for five years, and I just confirm with him that he will stay on for one more year to see how it goes, and then we'll revisit it next year.
Okay, thanks, John.
Put it in perpetuity.
Okay, then the other appointment is the, uh, planning board representative to the Open Space Preservation Commission?
No, to CPC.
Or CPC, I'm sorry, CPC. Uh, I'm currently serving on that. I'd be happy to do it again if you all decide to reappoint me, but, uh, if anyone else has a great interest in it.
I'd be happy to appoint, uh, to nominate, can you continue? Second.
Further nominations? Seeing none, I think you're ready for, for the vote. All those in favor of reappointing me to the CPC committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. Okay. We're still working on that. Let's see, we have appointments for the design review board.
Yes, they all, um, have agreed to stay on if you so choose to have them.
I think they're doing a great job on the design review board, so.
Just going to use that thing?
Uh, let's see. Including a new member.
Can you prove that?
That, that we, that we already did. So basically, uh, this is for new terms that would expire on thirty-first of July, two thousand seventeen. Uh, looking for a motion to approve, uh, Ellen Stoddard, uh, Jeff Dougherty, Jeanette Thompson, Rhea McNamara, as members and alternate members of Amy Radio Bush and Sean McGinnis. So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstaining, motion carries. And thank you for the design review board for your service, and whenever you're ready, uh, we have seven of our nine members here today.
Okay.
Uh, the two that are missing are going to be really good about watching the tape, so they, and they will be able to get around the vote when we get to voting. So it's your choice if you want to continue tonight with, with only seven of us.
We'll keep going.
Good.
Tonight.
Yep. Good. Okay, I'd like to open the public, uh, hearing. This is one-twenty-nine Hayden Row. Uh, this is for the new elementary school building, uh, site plan review for the town of Hopkinton. Uh, it's proposed construction of an elementary school and associated site improvements. Uh, we, we, some of you, some of you who are new to our plan, our site plan approval process, basically, we created an outline for the hearing. Uh, I think Jen and I went it over with, with, uh, the building committee representatives about a week or so ago, so they're familiar with the process. Uh, this is a public hearing, and we will take public comment, uh, in lots of it, and the only thing we kind of ask in the process is that we try to stick kind of the outline. So if we're talking about traffic, we don't want to talk about lighting, and we try to just get from one spot to the next spot and, and, and reach a consensus so that at the back end of it, it should be no, uh, no doubt that we're, we're moving towards an approval process. So basically, uh, during the detailed discussion, there'd be plenty of time for the public to comment, and you're encouraged, uh, to, to do so. Uh, you don't have to repeat it if somebody else has said it, uh, and we ask that you give your name and address, uh, so that, uh, we know who you are for the minutes, and, uh, there's an awful lot of paperwork that was submitted with this, this plan. We're probably not going to get it done tonight. Maybe we'll get it done the next night, I don't know, but, uh, it's a lot, lot, it's a big project for the town, and we respect that, and obviously, we're going to go through it in great detail. So, as we start our outline, basically, we're going to have a project introduction and kind of overview by the applicant.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
So I'm new to this whole process. Is there a way you could introduce yourselves or tell me, like, the players are?
Oh, on this side of the board, it's the planning board.
Okay.
And on the other side is, you can start that.
Yeah, hi, thanks, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Joe Markey, uh, chairman of the elementary school building committee. Uh, our work started three and a half years ago, and, uh, those of you attend town meeting have seen us a few times. Uh, the project was funded last fall. Uh, we've had many meetings with Parks and Rec. We saw you a couple times last year, uh, January, and then I think in May or June. Uh, so you've given us feedback and input along the way, and we appreciate that. Uh, our, what you'll see tonight is a, a detailed design plan that remains very consistent to the schematic design that you saw last year, uh, and that we presented at town meeting in the fall. Uh, it's a big project, we're, we're kind of going through permitting, we went through conservation commission, uh, things were looking good, but we left that hearing open so that if, case there's any feedback from planning board, we can bring that back to conservation commission later this month, and hopefully close that hearing then to design review board, provided their feedback to you in the packet. Uh, were there any other permitting? Mike?
No, we're, we're, we're pretty much on schedule. Um, as, as Joe mentioned, we're, it's been three some odd years and, and I'm seeing public hearings and public meetings, and, uh, so we're just looking forward to getting up before the planning board, and, um, you know, I hope you'll be able to realize that there's a lot of work, a lot of thought, but presented, we have a very professional staff that's helping us, and hopefully you'll go by.
Yeah, so with that, I just want to introduce our, our main consultants, Compass Project Management, uh, Jeff D'Amico is our principal project manager for this project. He's been doing an outstanding job, keeping track of all the details, keeping all the pieces, uh, in the right direction. And, uh, Jim Barrett is, uh, from, uh, Drummy Roseanne Anderson, DRA, our design partner. And Jim, uh, has a, a, a bunch of, uh, sub consultants working with the project as well. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Barrett, and he can introduce the, the team he's working with. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Joe, and, uh, good evening to everybody. Uh, what we wanted to do, this is the, uh, ten to fifteen minute overview, uh, that we'd like to, uh, take care of. What I'll introduce are those who will be, uh, joining this evening in terms of this presentation. So this is a subset of our design team, it's listed as the project team, but it's a subset. Chelsea Christensen will be joining us from Niche Engineering. Uh, she'll address issues relative to civil issues, stormwater, et cetera. Uh, Nick Hovind from Niche as well, will address, uh, traffic, uh, issues. Uh, David Warner from Warner Larson, uh, David will address landscape architecture issues as we go forward. Uh, joining me is Judd Christopher, he is our project manager, uh, with DRA. I'm serving as principal in charge, uh, and, uh, let's kick it off. David?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
As I asked before, the other part of my question was, what is the ultimate end goal or the purpose of coming in front of the, the planning board right now? Like, the objective is to get approval?
Yes.
Or just knowledge of what's going on?
No, this.
Again, I apologize to everybody for coming in late here, but.
This is a site plan approval public hearing, and at the end of this, the applicant will get approval to go build a school from, from the town. And, and I mean, that's, and, and we do the same for every commercial building in town in, in the process of doing it for Legacy Farms, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll kick off with, uh, site information.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is David Warner with Warner Larson Landscape Architects, and, uh, this first slide shows the upper portion of the former Irvine parcel that the town recently acquired, and it also shows the southern portion of the EMC park. Hayden Row Street is this road right here, and, uh, what we are showing on this plan is where the new driveway will be coming in off of Hayden Row Street, and, uh, basically, that leads up to the new building. This is a passenger, uh, car zone here with a parking lot for parents to come in and park, um, when they take their young children inside in the morning and also in the afternoon when they come to pick them up. The driveway continues past, uh, that loop to come to the back in a counterclockwise loop for the buses. Buses can queue up all along in here while still cars can get to this parking lot. This is a staff parking lot on the east side of the building. We have service at the north end of the building, and we have a play area out back, and we also have a main entrance for the, uh, parents here and the main entrance for children arriving by bus and also staff over there. Uh, I just wanted to focus a little bit on this one before we go to the next slide. We're making a connection, uh, all the way around the building for emergency access, but we're also making this connection to the existing parking lot at EMC park. Uh, and this is a, uh, emergency access to the site, but it also will be able to serve pedestrians and bicycles. We have a, an emergency gate that will be closed down at this point. We also have another gate at this point, and this whole schoolyard in the back has a gate here so that anybody coming through the site, um, will be prohibited from entering the schoolyard during school hours as something for the, uh, important for the function of this facility. The, uh, the bordering vegetated wetland is outlined in blue with the, uh, buffer zones offset from that, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred-foot buffer zone, and the entry drive is coming in right in between these two wetland resource areas. So this zooms in now on just around the schools, you can see a little bit more clearly how the spaces are being created. This is the main entrance. One of the main entrances is here, and then we have another main entrance over here as well, coming into the center part of the building. The pre-K, younger children, uh, part of the building is on the south wing with its own dedicated and enclosed play area. We have the cafeteria, gymnasium facilities, along with the kitchen and service, like I mentioned before, all located on this wing, and the, um, the K, one, uh, wing of some classrooms comes out towards, towards the west. We have, um, some spaces directly outside of those classrooms that can be used as outdoor learning environments. We also have a play area out back for recess directly adjacent to the cafeteria, um, with a structured play and open cave play area. This is all part of the emergency access route coming through the site. This is where the gate would be located to secure the back area, um, and we also have a fence that is a privacy fence next to the service area here, but then it's a chain link fence that comes around this side here. Play lawn here that allows for youth soccer will also be able to take advantage of this new field, and then future expansion is also provided, uh, for the classrooms on the west end of the building.
Good evening, I'm Chelsea Christensen from Niche Engineering, civil engineer. Um, as mentioned, we're in the process of going through a noticement tent with the Conservation Commission, protection of the wetlands. This plan here shows our, mostly our erosion control, but really highlights some of our stormwater basins. Um, around the perimeter of the site, you can see the wetland buffer zones, especially through the access drive, and we're, we're pretty restricted through the access drive as far as the buffer zones on both sides of us. The dark blue here are subsurface detention basins. This is like gravel wetland, which I can describe in detail later, and we have a bioretention area here for stormwater quality and storage, and also a few smaller basins are here, if you don't really see on the next slide. This is the overall site utility plan. Um, most of the, the access road is providing a, a, a utility corridor for pretty much all of the utility services, but the below-grade services coming up through this main corridor serving the new school building, they've been, um, sized to accommodate future expansion as well, so that we can accommodate whatever else happens on the, the other part of the site in the future, which is current unknown. Um, we have a, a water line looping through the site to provide, uh, air hydrants, uh, around the entire site, and, uh, we can get into more detail later as far as the stormwater controls and, and stuff.
Okay, thank you for having me. I'm Nick Hovind, traffic engineer. Um, I have two slides over here with, um, projected drop-off and a pickup. Um, our school, proposed school is, um, accessed through an intersection, it's driving here. It's a, a control by a, a fully actuated signal as, as part of the, um, recommendations from Beta. Um, we went ahead and changed it to a fully actuated signal over here, and it says two, a left turn out and left, uh, right turn out in a one-lane approach. Uh, the way we, uh, as Dave mentioned, the drop-off is going to happen, the parents are going to come here and drop off their children, and, and they just leave. This is the morning AM, uh, drop-off. The buses are going to use an upper parking lot. Next slide. And the pickup is, is for, is the same way, um, the way it happens at the central school right now. Uh, the parents come in ahead of time and they park, and they wait for, um, release of their children. So we have plenty of space in a, in a, uh, parking lot here for the, to meet the parents' needs, uh, you know, the parents that we counted on our, um, uh, observation. Also, they can stack up along the curb, and also, there's a special left-turn lane that can stack up up to seven or eight, I, I believe, cars over there in case anything comes up. And when they, they take their children, they can go up. Um, we, um, our analysis showed that there's going to be two-car queue over there at the worst-case scenario. And that's the.
I'm sorry, can you choose the first one?
The first one is going to have one corner. Good? Sure? Thank you.
One of the things when we talk about traffic a little bit more, uh, I may be a more visual guy, can, can you load up a plan with all the buses on it? How they all would stack up into that, around that corner?
I don't think we have one that shows the buses looping around there, but I believe we can accommodate. David, how many can we accommodate?
You don't have, you don't have to make it pretty, just a, a solid line, the length of a bus.
Yellow line.
You know.
You just don't have that diagram tonight.
This is not.
David, how many can it queue along there?
Well, we've designed this based on the first, uh, bus stopping here and the last bus stopping back here, so that there's the, um, ability for staff to come and go without a stop.
Okay, that's, that's kind of what I want to see.
Yeah, drop-off, well, the full complement of buses going to this.
So like twenty-five buses?
Yeah, but they come staggered. They come staggered in two different ways. So twelve at, at the most at one time.
Okay.
But right now, we have twenty-four buses that serve like the centers. In two waves, in two waves. But I think it's enough to.
If you can.
We can demonstrate that.
Okay.
I'm curious, is this not how to ask questions?
No, 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 we'll get into the detail, I just.
Good?
Yeah. Good.
So lastly, we just want to quickly share with you some of the, uh, architectural detailing of the building, and just as a, a broad overview, so the dark blue areas are those areas that are classroom or kind of core areas of building. Uh, the pink area that's shown here is predominantly administration. There's a separate, this is the pre-K entrance, it has its own administration associated with that entrance point to the facility, and everything from this point back becomes the major public portions of the building. That includes the cafeteria and the gymnasium, uh, portions of the building. These can be easily segregated and opened at off-hours if necessary for public use. Uh, this is the upper level, and it basically parallels what you have seen below. The majority of the activity on the upper level is classroom usage. Uh, there is a library located in this zone on the, on the plan. Uh, at this point. At this point, I just want to quickly jump over to a computer model to share a general overview of the building. This is an aerial view. You'll never see this in real life unless you're a balloonist, but coming down to grade level, a sense of the organization of the building. This is that drop-off main entrance point to the facility. A sense of the organization of the building, the plaza that's associated with that main entrance point. As we come down the wing, this is that classroom wing of the portion of the building. This is one of the outdoor classroom spaces that David touched on, the landscape component. So this entire wing of the building is classroom usage. As we come around to the back of the facility, this is the greenfield play area, the hardscape play area, the structured play area, and then back entrance to the cafeteria. It gives you a sense of the transparency through the main lobby space out into it, a view basically at the neck of that connector walkway, pathway to EMC Park. Coming over to the bus drop-off wing, this is the gymnasium, the bus entrance point. Basically, this area of the building at the first floor serves as the connector for both that front entrance and the bus drop-off entrance. Students arrive at the same knuckle point within the facility. This is that pre-K area, its own dedicated entrance point, doorway, and play area due to the age groups' separate play escape than that of the older children. And then back out to an aerial overview. So there's a quick snapshot of the organization of the building. That's what we have to share.
Jim?
Yes, sir.
Last time you were here, we had a green roof. It looks like we lost the green roof in the process?
Yeah, you mean in terms of the vegetated roof as a lower area? That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That's the overview. Okay. Okay, now I guess next, Principal Planner, Jennifer, why don't you give some comments?
So I don't have many comments. I reviewed the plans briefly and then I went away. And then when I came back today, I reviewed them again and along with Beta's memo. And so in front of you tonight, there was a sort of update to my memo with some additional items that I feel need to be addressed that were either zoning items or site plan standards that I feel are not being met. So I have more copies for the team too, but I can't reach them right now, so I'll get them to you in a minute. So those are just some items that I think we should go over when we get to the waiver issue. We did, it's the back, Joe, it's the back those, I believe, or, yeah, sure. We did get comments from Board of Health and Designer Review Board. CONCOM is rescheduled, I believe, for the 25th, so they're moving forward. Other than that, I don't have a lot of other comments at this time. When we get to the waiver request, I may have some additional comments to go with that.
Any questions for Jennifer? Okay, we're moving right along, which is good. Next, Beta folks, who wants to give some overview of comments? We'll get to all the detailed ones, but it's kind of an overview.
Anything in particular you want to focus on or just run through the?
Just run through in general.
In general, all right.
Five minutes.
Very good. As was mentioned, we've also reviewed this for conservation, so I won't necessarily go through any of those comments, but we've been working with the consultants to address the comments we've made during that process. Some of the more bigger comments are the 50-foot buffer that's required in the Residence B. They have one segment where they're only providing a 20-foot, 25-foot buffer. We suggested some additional screening might be helpful in that area. The landscape requirements for the parking lot, we outlined some areas where they could provide some additional plantings and also asked that they clarify how the 10% interior landscaping had been addressed. They have provided landscaping at the islands, basically, on the ends of the parking areas. I just want to see how the 10% criteria applies. We're looking for a little bit of additional screening from some of the dumpster and mechanical areas. There's a backup generator they've shown. We questioned what the fuel source for that was and where the storage tanks would be and wanted to consider some additional screening around the generator. Also asked to clarify the extent to which the sidewalks were proposed on Hayden Row in terms of sight lighting. It looked like, there was a fair number of questions about sight lighting, particularly the photometrics were difficult to follow in some spots. So we looked for some clarification on that. And wanted to note that they looked like pole heights as currently proposed exceed the And we're also wondering if it would be security lighting or any use of motion sensors for Just wanted to confirm in terms of emergency access, the talk with the fire and police had reviewed their access and we're happy with what was provided just to close that Another thing that we commented that would be helpful in terms of the review was we had noted there were several areas which appear to need a waiver. Oftentimes, the applicants provide an actual waiver list. We did not see that in the package. That could be, it just makes everything a little easier for everybody to follow. We also noted that there's a lot of porous pavement being proposed and porous pavement, by its nature, is sometimes difficult to maintain, requires it to be vacuumed pretty much on a yearly basis. We just wanted to make sure the town was aware of that and was accepting of the maintenance requirements. We had several planned comments that were, a lot of them were just clarifications on light pole locations and locations of some of the berms and roof drains. We'll get through all that nitty-gritty. We also had a couple of comments for some additional construction details we'd like to see to provide some clarifications on the intent. I'm just skimming to skip over the, get the highlights. In terms of traffic, we're looking for additional crash data just to confirm the hazard of that area. And also looking for some additional information on the number of students who walk. Some additional information on the time at which the counts were taken and suggesting some additional days. And also noticed a discrepancy between the existing drop-off and pickup volumes. I'm just curious as to why there was a difference there. Those are the highlights. I think there was quite a lot of traffic comments and if you're all with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to defer on those for a moment because our traffic engineer would probably be better to speak to those and I think you'll probably get to traffic more into more detail later.
Okay. Can I be with the chair?
Yeah.
Just a quick explanation. This is our engineer that town hires to review what we're seeing and he has professional questions, independent of the project.
Okay. Thank you. What you should be, hopefully there's still copies left. There's an outline. We've been kind of following the outline. I've been making changes to it as I'm listening to people so far. We're on item number four, which is where planning board members and the public can add to the outline. This is kind of like a brainstorming session. And so all we want to do is get it on the outline. We're going to, we're going to talk about anything that you want to talk about, but we want to get it to the outline so that number one, they're prepared the next meeting or whenever we get to it. And two, we don't forget about that important comment or that important subject. So that's kind of why we kind of put the outline. Jennifer and myself worked on initial draft of the outline, but we missed a lot of things because we always miss a lot of things because we don't have all the information. So a lot of that information might come from citizens that are around here that have questions and we will be happy to talk about it. So right now, we're going to add to the outline some of the things that I heard for changes to the outline. On 5B, in relationship to neighboring homes and property, there's a buffer requirement that I believe we heard. Sidewalks under traffic D will be item seven. Parking lot, the landscaping 10% requirement is a key item. Under lighting, which is G, add an item four, pole heights. And we'll expand the screening for the dumpster to include the generator. And landscaping also kind of the buffer, which is K. Electricity, you didn't hear that here, but.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was K? What did you add to K?
K, just add the buffer supplement. Utilities, basically, when I went through the plans, there's a couple of new poles on the road and we'd like to talk about those because the, and then we're going to add one asset at bottom, which will be Beta's comments regarding the details. So if we get down to the last of all the detailed discussion, if Beta's still got something left and hopefully through this process, the engineers work with our town engineers and that list gets smaller and smaller every time we get through this type of thing. So now entertain additional comments from members of the board or additions to the outline. Frank?
Discussion about the green roof.
Okay, let's see. How about under, under building design?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I believe I may have skipped one by mistake.
Okay.
Maximum height in this zoning district is 35 feet.
Got it. Let's put that under building design.
Yep.
Max height. We're going to hit all these ones that are waived and I think that's on our list. So, okay. John?
I hate to bring this up, but it's the time of, it's the year we live in and I've done quite a bit of reading on active shooter situations and I'd like to see a active shooter safety plan, roadways in and out, be able to get buses out, be able to get emergency vehicles in two ways. And in the discussions on that, the lack of a traffic safety plan to be implemented in that case caused problems with emergency vehicles. So I'd like to see at least an outline of a traffic safety plan and how the physical structure relates to that safety plan.
Okay, why don't we expand fire and we'll make it fire and police safety? And we'll add another outline called active shooter planning?
Sadly.
Yeah. Any other comments from the board members? Anyone from the public?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Number five, F, EMC parking interconnection.
Yep.
I'd like to understand what does that process look like? You know, they talked about having access to 95 additional parking spots. A lot of those spots during the school there are taken. High school kids use up a lot of those spots, so just be cognizant of that. And then in the springtime, you've got little league games going on and that parking lot is packed. So for evening type events, who opens up those gates? How is that? I just don't understand that a little bit better.
Through the, through the chair.
Yep.
I think that also ties in with the active shooter because that would be the second, means a Bgress, so maybe tie that all in together.
Sure. Okay. We're talking a lot about how we get between the two and how it all fits together. Other items.
Chris, I have a concern about decimal levels generated from the HVAC code. I don't know how that.
We can, we'll bring that up as roof, we got roof HVAC units and noise.
Thank you.
Okay, I thought, I saw Jane's hand up there.
Jane Moran, Chairman of the Upper Charles Trail Committee. And we've been working with the school. And this, we have planned for, to develop some trails that will access through the new school property and I didn't have that mentioned, I'm just wondering.
Okay, we got that in two, C2, we'll talk about trails. That one I anticipated. Okay, other comments, questions, particularly neighbors and the butters? Yes, sir?
So I haven't introduced myself. I'm Dave DiStefano. I live right across from the entrance of 134.
Okay.
So one thing I, we talked about lighting of the parking lot, but specifically the residual lighting for after-hours would be something, would be interesting, right? Whether it's security or.
It's on there, 5G, 5G.
5G, we've got, yeah, we've got, we've got that, but let's also add.
After-hours lighting.
Let's talk about lights and headlights at his intersection. And so.
Is that under traffic, though, headlights?
Uh, let's, no, let's call it under landscaping. Lighting, lights on neighbors or something like that. Car lights.
Okay.
We got, okay, those are all good items.
I have a question. You mentioned a traffic light at the entrance to the school. Put on the outline the location of that light. There are several streets in between Chestnut and that light that when the traffic queues up in the morning, they won't be able to pull out of their street.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Block the entire street until the light turns green and then they're not going to get it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we add it into the traffic area? We'll just put traffic light as a separate item. Maybe it'll be paragraph three and then we'll just move the other ones on down. Okay, other items. Okay, it looks like we're doing well to get going and we've got about 35 minutes left that we've got scheduled tonight. And the first item, I'm going to, if I don't, I'm not seeing any more additions to the outline, so we'll call that one item four closed. And we're now into the detailed discussion phase. And we're going to just try to work right down the outline. They'll get another one published for the next meeting with checkmarks as to where we're at. That isn't to say we, we're going to try to get to a consensus on each item and then unless somebody has an awful lot of very important new information, we try not to go back to it. So basically, the first item that we had on the detailed discussion was waiver requests. I'm going to start the discussion a little bit in that the waiver requests are basically to the site plan standards that we have to judge this. And these standards are attached to the back of the outline and they go from A to R. And all these standards have been approved by town meeting and all the people in town. And these are the standards that we believe that our commercial and public buildings should be built to. And so to see nine waivers to these standards of less than 26, I will admit, that's the first time I've seen this many in my nine years on the planning board. So we grant some of these. So we grant some of these type of things occasionally.
To be fair, only five of them are to the actual site plan standards. There's a couple to other items.
Okay. Okay.
And I think we, we got some questions on one of them.
Do you want to, could, could maybe DRA run through the list of the waiver requests? Would that help?
Sure. Right now, we're going to go through it and we'll talk, we'll go right down Jen's list. And this will be kind of the preliminary review. We might touch on these a little bit later in the detailed discussion, but I want people to kind of get a feeling as to where we are on waivers because at the next meeting, one of the ways to solve those is to do minor redesign to go, maybe not require one or, or to come up with the information that would be persuasive that the town's standards need to be waived. So let's go down through Jen's list of, of items. I think the first one was maximum height of 35 feet. I don't remember seeing a, a plan that showed dimensionally what it was.
No, I believe Beta scaled it at 38 feet.
The plans state that the building height will be 28 feet. And when you look at the elevations, they, they labeled the main building at 28 feet, but they do not mention the mechanical spaces on the top or the atrium. By scale, it looked to be about 38 foot.
Well, to the top of the hip roof over the lobby, that is 38 feet. But from the regulations, it says that you take the mean height of the eve to the ridge, which would be the average of that height. So it's 28 at the bottom, it's 38 at the top. So that average height would put us at 33 feet. We, we have not done building calculations to rooftop units.
Okay. Rooftop units, I think, are included, I believe.
Yeah, I don't believe it.
It doesn't say in the regulations.
My regulations-
Let's, we're going to talk about that in the past. The action item is to kind of tell us what those numbers are and come back with, what you think the numbers are.
So we had it at 33, which is why we didn't list it as a waiver request. Correct.
Maybe, maybe you can write a paragraph or two as to why you believe that, that works. The second one is a 50-foot wide buffer in waiving the buffer requirement. I guess as the action item, I think we want to maybe a, a map that just shows where that 50-foot are. Maybe you can go, you can go that. The reason we want a map is if we're going to waive it, we're going to waive it in that requi, in that area only. And we'll have to also determine, so where does the 50-foot get waived?
Go to the next slide, Jen. Dave, you want to highlight it?
Sure. So the areas where, where less than 50 feet are for the landscape buffer in these areas in here as well as, let's see, you know, right over here, right in the gravel wetland.
Yes, but the gravel wetland is vegetated, so.
Right. So the, the 50-foot landscape buffer you're, by law, your site plan standards are intended to maintain and protect existing tree vegetation. We have to clear some of the trees in there to construct the project and those areas are being revegetated. I think that your consultant did recommend that those revegetated areas incorporate some more woody saplings and that type of thing to accelerate succession. I think that's a good suggestion. We'd like to accommodate that, but we still, I think, need the waiver in order to be able to clear trees in that area if you work this project.
Okay. Let's, let's just quick, let's just discuss it just a little bit right in here. If you're going to the one that you just were pointing at, if I remember from the picture, the wetland goes into that, so that lot, which we don't own, is non-buildable? Is that, is that, is that a-
This is the boring vegetated wetland line, yes, Mr. Chairman. And so this is the wetland area east of the buffer zone, so they didn't-
Yes, majority of that site is all wet.
So, so-
So in and at Southax is a buffer zone, even though we're approaching, close to that other parcel.
And there, there are no houses on that, in that section right now?
No.
And who owns that? Mike, do you remember?
I'm sure.
Okay. And then if you go to the buffer up on the top section?
Yes, so these areas in here we're clearing in order to be able to construct the bus driveway. There is a fill in this area that would be graded slope down that shows in the grading plan. That would be revegetated. So this lighter green area would be new vegetation on a fill slope facing in an easterly direction. We have, are keeping a 25-foot buffer zone of existing trees in that area, but within the 25 to 50, we have to clear and fill and then revegetate.
Okay. And if, if I go clockwise, the first little triangular piece up there, right next to the, that, yeah, right there, that's one of the lots owned by the Abbott Realty Trust. The second one is also owned by Abbott Realty Trust, I believe, as is the third one you're seeing down there. And those three lots that I just talked about, the roadway that is, I think it's unbuilt, Myrtle Way, has been encroached by lots of water. And those three lots are on a potential plan that, that might be able to be built. So those three lots are potentially, if the town was to grant them sewer probably. If I go down to the next one, which is that one there, that one is unlikely to be built because it is, other than the corner you're showing, the rest of it is well within the 100-foot buffer on the wetland. That would not be built. No way they can build on that lot. And then the next lot, the big lot down there, which is one of the Irvine properties, unfortunately, their lot, the roadway that was to connect to that through that other, other intersection is completely underwater at this point. So that, that lot is stranded out at this point. I don't think it can be built on either. So I just wanted the board members to kind of think about that as-
The lot in front is owned by Botka, B-O-T-K-A. It's the last name.
Okay. So-
At that point, Mr. Chairman, those three lots that you talked about, potentially that could be built upon the top, what would be their access to any main road?
It would be a new cul-de-sac off of, off of Blueberry.
Okay.
Is that Blueberry right there?
Yeah. Blueberry is the houses up there.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is that, that T intersection in the middle is kind of right there is all wet.
Yeah.
And so they would be putting a cul-de-sac in that area.
Why is it shaped like that? Is that proposed road or?
That's the, that's what the subdivision, the planning board approved in probably about 95-ish or something like that, when that was subdivided. And since then, it's gotten a lot more wet, I guess. And I know none of those lots are buildable without town sewer. And maybe one or two are potentially. And the town is not granted to develop a sewer in that area.
So I guess just to summarize on the waiver request for the buffer, we're, we're asking it because we might have to take trees down between 25 and 50 feet, but the intention is to replant there. We've got a contest on that.
In general, coming through the chair?
Yep.
Conservation commission has looked at this and you guys have an open session with them and-
Mike, can you summarize conservation? Because we went through conservation for one step and now we're going through NOI.
Yeah. And that's the next step. And the, the agency of conservation has the working, the engineer for that is Peter as well. And they're communicating with our engineers at NCH and hopefully they'll work out whatever issues there are. I understand they're not major.
Right. This is questions right now and they'll be worked out.
So the effort is to make sure everybody's on the same page.
And if you were maybe putting a trail in around the road that wasn't using the road as an access, maybe in that 25 to 50 feet is, is the spot where the trail would have to go if you wanted to connect EMC Park with the southern part of that section. So it would be kind of cleared, maybe you just don't plant quite as many trails. And, and our buffer by law allows for bike and pedestrian trails within that 50-foot buffer.
Yes.
Okay.
If you just want to go back to the first one real quick, it does say that chimney spikes, towers and other projections not used for human occupancy may be constructed above the foregoing height limitations upon grant of a special permit by the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
So they can construct those higher than 35 feet, but they have to get a special permit from the Board of Appeals.
And I would say the other of that would include the air conditioning units if that is the case.
Correct.
Okay. We can't necessarily waive that requirement. Okay. And I think the action item on the 50-foot is just to give us a, a plan that shows exactly where you're requesting the, the waiver request. Okay. We'll just go, briefly go through the, the next one. Is 10% of interior parking lot having 25 or more spaces? Must be with landscaping, including trees, et cetera. Just about everyone hates this that comes before us because they lose parking spaces because of it. But we did pass that in town meeting four or five years ago because we thought it was the green thing to do. And that might be one that you guys have to go relook at that or figure out how to convince our friends at Beta, how you do the math to, to get that to pass.
If we could ask Warner Larson, he'll ready to explain that.
Okay.
So if you look at the parking lot this way, four edges here, 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 there, the square footage of this is such that it would require about 50-foot by 50-foot area of green space within that parking lot. It's maybe broken up in a couple of different islands. That would eliminate 12 parking spaces in this lot. So that's just simple math. I think it would be our request to consider the definition of the parking lot is using the surrounding areas as well. I don't know if your, your regulations allow that level of interpretation, but for instance, like this is a very large green space here and the areas around the loop here that we've been able to maintain by really giving the parking lot a landscape setting so that it's got substantial buffer, both aesthetically and environmentally. As you approach the school, your first impression of the facility is not a sea of cars because this is mounded up and planted and it is a landscape buffer. And, you know, around the back here, just due to the nature of the journey movements of large apparatus like buses, we have substantial islands that I believe are about 25 feet across here. So the driveways and the parking lots themselves considered, we can run a calculation on that, I haven't, but whether or not these areas count for 10%, like that, as we talk to that is one suggestion is a way of avoiding the need for a waiver.
Mr. Chair?
Whatever member through the chair?
Yeah.
When we passed this was to try to avoid the large massing of asphalt, which is going to create extensive heat. It will also, by putting trees and vegetation inside the parking lot provides shade for some of the cars. So it reduces the amount of heat put off and absorbed and also providing shade.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, one coming up. Can you just double check on the width of that 20, what you're calling 25 feet? Because to me, it looks like about the same length as a parking space, which is probably about 10 feet.
The depth of the parking space?
Yeah. You're saying the green right there is 25 feet? That's a question in that.
I can, I can double check that.
Yeah. Why don't, why don't we leave this one as an-
The width would be 10. The depth of the space is 18.
Okay. Both are.
Why don't, why don't we leave this as an action item to try to convince Beta as to how the calculation should be considered and try to work on that.
Okay.
And let you, let the engineers talk to each other and try to figure out kind of what, what makes the basis of the calculations and what, what can be maybe done to do that.
The heat sink issue, we talked about with our, our own needs as well as the need for the parking spaces. But we also talked about snow removal. We just, we just happen to live in Massachusetts and, and the islands, while they're nice and we'll do all those things, cut down the hot tub, they, they make it miserable to take the snow away. So that was an issue as well for us.
And you're not alone. Everyone that comes on that side of the table has the same comments and reinforce them.
Equally as bad. I mean, it-
Mr. Chair, if we haven't already discussed where we're going to put that, will we put that with stormwater management?
Snow removal? I was just going to bring the same point. I don't see it on here and I just, Mr. Shepherd brought up a good point about snow removal and I'd like to make sure we discuss that.
Okay. We'll add snow removal to the-
Thank you. Just talk about it.
Okay. We'll kind of go somewhere in there. Okay. Let's, let's try to get through all this list of waivers at least at the top level so that, because that's, that's the hardest part for us. Let's see. I think the next one, all utilities are underground. I think there's two utility poles that are within the scope of the project. We are, if you read the paper, we put Mr. McDowell to task on just two poles and I suspect that we-
Mr. Chair? I think this is a relocation, not a new pole being added, which is a different issue.
If it's the same number of poles, I have no problem, but I'm not sure. I didn't look at it.
There was a net one.
There's a net one.
Yeah. Net one? I think there was a new one that they had to bring the power to just inside the, inside the site that then would go underground.
And that's exactly what Mr. McDowell had a problem with.
Do you have some expertise or advice for us on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it won't pay him out.
From not reading the paper though, so what's our action? Follow back up with utilities?
Yeah, we have a meeting scheduled on the utilities so we can discuss it.
And I'll give you guys the results.
Feel free to ask Mr. McDowell how we got that taken care of.
In two weeks.
So tell us.
Okay. Mechanical equipment, other utility on the, equipment on the roof, et cetera, will be screened from view of the ground.
So I'm sorry, are we able to ask questions now about the electric poles and, so I think right now, again, I'm not an expert, you guys have done all the measurements, but isn't there a pole right in the middle of the driveway right now?
I think that's, I think that's what-
Relocating.
Yeah.
So they'll be able to move that without adding another one? Is that, or? I think they want to add another one to bring it in further, which we highly discourage. We don't want any new poles into the property.
Relocating, we're not, it's not our purpose to make all the wires go underground on Hay Road Street. I mean, unfortunately, we're living with those. But particularly if, if you're building the road to subdivision standards, that pole wouldn't be allowed to go over, overhead.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I expanded that portion, Dave, if our, at 134 and 136, A number pro would need to be refitted, the main house, the power supply, due to that shift at all?
This is naming as advertised.
We'll, we'll, we'll talk more about the poles that are, when it comes up on the outline, but we-
Okay.
Yeah. No, that's okay. I, it's, this is kind of a preliminary go-through the waiver list today, you know, and that isn't to say that minds can be changed, but you know, this is the initial read of, of things. Screening of mechanical equipment on the roof. We get a lot of pushback on mechanical equipment on the roof and at a minimum, we're going to need cut sheets of what that stuff is going to look like because to me, it's prominent in, in the view. The town went nuts when the flying- The town went nuts when the flying saucers went on Kalaula's roof first, and, you know, we've had that bylaw in there, and we even forced it, I think, on everyone ever since for every site plan review.
We'll be prepared to talk about that at the next meeting, but you'll, you'll quickly see that if you're encapsulating all of these mechanical units, they'll be much more offensive in the size and complexity and height of them in order to screen the units behind them. Units used today are a lot more aesthetically pleasing than they were with the older units that are out there. We can provide you with cut sheets, but at the end.
Or photographs, something.
It's still a public process, so they're, they're allowed to, or equals in mass general law, so we'll as much as possible, you know, manage that.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
On that screening, does the screening provide additional sound attenuation?
Was it one thirty? Come on, come on in.
One pipe receiving, one thirty-six, eight row screen.
The screening probably does do some, but it's really not usually designed for that. It all depends on what the person puts up. A lot of times it's an aesthetic, you know, you'll see the little rail fence that's on Hopkinton Drug. You'll see the. You'll see Kalaula's, which quite frankly does not look much better, but you'll see the same, same screening on, on the insurance folks over on Liberty Mutual, and, and it looks great. I mean, and, you know, you'll see in a lot of South Street buildings that have been built in the last ten, fifteen years.
My comments only come from the high school, which is quite low.
Okay. Okay. We'll talk about that in a lot more detail here. Dumpsters. Took me five years on the planning board to get the dumpster behind this building screened. You're going to have a hard pressed time getting my, my vote for an on-screen dumpster, so. That's, and that's a subject that I think I understand, but that's just me. But we, we required it on everyone that we've done in the last nine years.
Mr. Chair, I think you're going through this, so we, you're, obviously, it's a standard, and we've submitted waivers, and you're rearticulating that that's the standard so that we can explain why we're applying for waiver, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. We're going to talk about these in great detail when we get down the outline.
But I'd like to at least make a quick statement on the justifications maybe with the waiver from DRA or their, or Warner Larson.
So the dumpster would be located in the service area at the back of the building, and it's tucked in behind this piece of the building where the kitchen is, and so it would be located here, and it's also behind the play area, which will have a wood screen fence along here. So it's effectively screened from the front of the building and from the back. It's visible for, to passerby's who are coming along this, this service access road here. And we found that oftentimes with school facilities, when you put gates on it to screen, fully enclose it and screen it, that those become the first things to break, become dysfunctional. So, you know, we, we look for ways to integrate the dumpster within a screen environment without necessarily having to gate it off. And I think that in the long-term operation of this facility, we're, we're not wanting to put gates on it if you don't have to.
We haven't been too flexible with any of the businesses around on that subject. We understand the problem. It's just, we're not, just historically, the board hasn't been flexible on that. Sidewalks on the frontage of the lot. I'm not su- we're going to talk about sidewalks in a greater context. I'm not sure whether putting a sidewalk along the, the two pieces that are currently owned here does a lot in the short term. I think if you were doing all of Hayden Row, which is not part of this project, it might make a lot of sense to do that, so.
Mr. Chair, would they be responsible for the entire length on Hayden Row of the property? Length there?
Historically, we've only required it, it would be voluntarily if it was anything other than their, their property and.
We, we should have a more detailed discussion on the sidewalks because.
We've got it on the general of where we're going to put sidewalks with the next funding of sidewalks.
Yeah, we, we appeared before the planning board all over the year, and, and we requested the planning board help us to get DPW, because they're the ones trying to figure out where all the sidewalks should go. And we thought this should be a higher priority.
Correct, but is there some kind of study that says how far we should be going with sidewalks?
Yeah, about, about a year ago, when we brought this up with the, with Elaine Lazarus, the belief at that time was that the town had prioritized the stretch of Hayden Row from EMC Park to the new proposed school driveway on the east side of Hayden Row as a priority for the town in the funding that was already allocated.
I would, I would like to see some, a write-up on this about how far children need to walk to school and whether there should be sidewalks at that distance. Now, how we get those is a different story, but what should be the guideline of where sidewalks.
We like sidewalks, so I'm agreeing with you. The project.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to see where and to what extent.
Maybe, maybe if you can give us a map that shows the circle of where, if we had sidewalks, people would be requested to walk from, just, you know, draw it on the, on the town map, and then we'll figure out where. We, we have some maps as to where town sidewalks are.
Mr. Chair, while we're talking about sidewalks, and this is a, a early elementary building, pre-K through one, I'd like to get an idea of how many students, pre-K through one, actually do walk to school. I mean, I don't believe there's a lot, I'm sure there are some, but I don't believe that there are a lot of students in that age group walking.
The superintendent's here, she could address that.
I am here. We are not anticipating many students walking at all, partly because of the length of the distance, and also because currently at least, all children at that age level have a sink offered to them. However, on the other side of that, we would love to encourage families to walk and use the playground, for example. So we certainly would like it to be accessible with sidewalks. But to answer your question directly, there are very few that we would anticipate walking on a, on a data basis.
Okay.
Can you round us on the topic we're on, Kent?
What?
Could you please round me up on what, what topic? Is this a waiver for sidewalks?
A waiver for sidewalks along the entire frontage of the property.
I see.
Help us, help us to, help us to grant that one, you know.
I think, again, the history on that was that the town had already agreed to fund that portion of the sidewalk on Hayden Row, and it was prioritized as part of funding that had already been allocated. So that's where the history of that came from.
We put, we put a priority of sidewalks near the school, and that's how Ash Street got very high on the list, and now we've switched to school location, but, so, and we have spent almost all that sidewalk money, I believe, it's, but, but we did at town meeting approve design money for the next round, and we're still working with DPW to.
It's very small, about a hundred thirty thousand.
Yeah, but that was design only, so, you know.
Yeah. So I think we're hoping to work with the town on that solution.
Okay, so I. Yeah, go ahead.
On the, in favor of the east side sidewalk, would be some alleviation of the dangerous crossing at EMC Park. I'd like that to be considered.
Yeah. I, I, I think as this whole area gets developed, I think you're going to see support for the planning board of sidewalking maybe the entire area on the, on the east side of, of, of that area. All the crossings are, if you could keep half of them from crossing over, that'd be good. You know, they're, they're making some improvements, I noticed today, to some of the ramps, et cetera, down on other parts of Hayden Row, the DPW's spending some money, so. Okay. Try to finish up on the last two here, and then we'll continue the hearing. Pole, height, heights of the poles, I don't remember seeing a detail of, of the length of poles in the parking lot somewhere, and.
It wasn't a detail, but the heights were on the photometric plan. It did look really hard to find it.
I'll have to double check into that because they did a photometric plan originally at the twenty-foot height, and then we told GGD, who was our electrical engineer, that the town has a requirement for a fifteen-foot pole, and they reran it, so maybe they just submitted the old plan.
This is also something that this board has the ability to waive if you give us a justification, and.
So we'll come to this meeting with the photometric.
I mean, we're, we're looking that it doesn't shine off the site and make sure that it doesn't go into your neighbors' houses, et cetera, which I think you're probably in pretty good shape because.
We're pretty far set back.
And then the emergency access road is, I believe, eighteen feet wide. We had a big discussion about twenty feet at our last approval of a, of a site plan, our solar farm. I guess the fire safety code is changed and.
Well, it, it really didn't change. You had, you were talking about was that solar away, and there was only one way to get into it. According to the fire chief, because this is a secondary means for me here, so emergency access, the requirement to re-weight, and he's the one who weighs it, and he's only interested that the vehicles can make the turning radius, so he said he could weigh it down to eighteen feet. Can't do that for primary kitchens, it's always secondary. So that's what we.
Well, see, this, this facility made more sense to me to require the bigger one just because, not that if there's a fire, he's going to drive wherever he wants to.
Well, that's, in reality, that's what happened.
Yeah. But, okay, but might, maybe, do we have a letter from the fire chief on that yet?
Not officially. We have a, an email he had sent to Mike Shepherd indicating that, but I can get one officially addressed to the board.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yep.
I'd like to see, going back to, if there was a blockage in the front, I want to make sure you can get school buses out and emergency vehicles in with no problems on that backup road, that if it's a true secondary emergency exit, that emergency vehicles can pass each other with no problems, so I'd like to see a description of that.
Mm-hmm.
To the chair.
Yeah.
To officers in the audience, is that something you guys are working on, or is that something you can communicate to the team for us, or?
Mr. Chair, just to that point, can we maybe put signage, no markings, on the side of that road?
Thank you.
Okay.
It's going to be gated?
It's going to be gated.
If people could park there to pick their kids up and then go to the park, and they'll line the street because it's the closest access to the school.
That's what we're talking about. The signage might, might be something that might be needed. Okay, yes, sir.
Just, I wonder if this might also be consideration for that concern the gentleman just had, that if the town is planning on a future Loop Road through here, whether that would, as a second means, fully, you know, a full roadway from the Loop here alleviates some of the concern of that being.
That's for that, yeah. It's future though, right?
Sure.
Yeah. That, that might help if, if they truly bring it back out to Hayden Row. You know, we don't, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that. Hopefully, we'll get some people from the Irvine-Todaro. So basically, we're at time for our next hearing. Jennifer, when, should we continue this? I assume you want the next meeting.
Yeah, July twenty-fifth at seven thirty.
That sounds good. So look for a motion to continue the public hearing to July twenty-fifth at seven, oh, hold it, seven thirty, or should we do seven?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
What do we have on, what do we have on July twenty-fifth?
Nothing at the moment. This will be the first item.
But we'll have.
We'll have legacy.
Probably that's the only thing left, right?
Nothing's been filed.
And they, so they won't make that in time for?
No. I did speak to somebody, but he probably won't make it until late August, so.
Okay, so seven thirty at, on July?
Twenty-eighth.
Second?
Twenty-fifth. Moving second. Yes, Mike.
Kent, we, we made a special attempt here to get the Todaro, Irvine property study committee here. They don't have a lot to offer, and I think it'll probably take them thirty seconds. Rather than have them all come back, Nick, did you listen to what they put in plan for that area at this point?
All fairness. What?
We'll chat thirty seconds later next time.
Okay. Go for your first thirty seconds, but we will. No, no, we, we've got to keep going. I'm, I'm sorry, but.
So for the, the next hearing, what, what's the time limit that will be allotted? You know, we, we need to cover a lot. We spend a large chunk of time just going through the list that was already assembled. We just want to make sure we're start with your time.
Sure.
And the twenty people we brought tonight that we can move through the process.
I don't know. We'll, we'll figure that out when we get done with our next hearing, but at least an hour and fifteen minutes, which would be kind of half the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anytime, we'll follow up through the town planner and your consultant.
Anything you guys do. We have a motion and a second on the floor to continue the public hearing. Through the discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Oh, it's excellent, thank you.
We usually do that when our job.
Down here.
Thank you for helping out. I'm sorry you're behind the times. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you all.
See you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Well, excuse me, hi.
It's a lot of work. Because you're right.
Hi, how you doing? And I can sure it clears out when my progress doesn't happen often.
Okay. Before we get started, we're missing two members today. They have not missed any other meeting, I believe, so they will. They will be eligible to, to vote after reading or watching the tape. And they're both good at that, so.
Who's not, who's not here, just so I?
Cliff is not here, and also, yeah. Okay. Anyway, we're getting there. So, we'll reopen the continued public hearing for the northeast, northwest, and north club villages at Legacy Farms. Application for a Osmid site plan review. I'm just opening up the site plan review. I'm just opening up the site plan review. The master plan special permit and the... Both the master plan special permits suggest we do not open those up tonight so that we don't lose members on those that we're at. So let's start with a motion to continue the two special permit applications to January, I mean, July. July, July...
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth at seven thirty...
Eight thirty-nine?
About eight forty-five.
Forty-five again.
So, did anyone make the motion? Give your motion a second.
Discussion, we've made it nine, give the schools a little bit more time, and then Legacy can have the rest.
Well, I was going to give Legacy an hour and fifteen minutes and the school an hour and fifteen minutes.
So moved.
Okay. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, anyone abstained, motion carries. Okay, so those are set. And...
Seven twenty-five, thirty-four.
And so, anyway, we've got the public hearing reopened for the review. Planning Board received electronically on Thursday a whole pile of stuff. After our deadline and after the time that Beta folks could provide any review and comment, we'll talk about most of that stuff next time, as opposed to this time, we just don't have an awful lot. For members of the planning board and other people interested, we did receive comments from, on the peer review on the LMG stuff. Wasn't exactly what I was expecting, per se, I guess it never always is, but I think we're going to have a discussion hopefully this week and sort it out. Basically, it was a review comment that said, yeah, maybe, but there's a little bit of homework on a couple of things. So that's how I characterize it, you know, and... So we'll get that sorted out, hopefully we'll get that sorted out so that we can talk about that subject in our next meeting, which is a critical one. The other thing for our next meeting or so, we need to start drafting the conditions, now that vacation time is over.
Now that playtime's over.
Yeah, you and Elaine to start working on that whole area. And then, I think, from Beta's standpoint, you now have this pile of drawings, I think, or maybe it's a different pile.
It's a bigger pile.
It's this one, it's down at the bottom, it's this pile.
All the volumes.
And, you know, pick one of the villages and try to get through that one first, and then, you know, we can minimum, you know, if you can't get all three of, three villages done all at once, we'd like to at least talk about that at our next meeting, for sure.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, can I just characterize what was submitted to you so that everyone's aware? What we provided on Thursday was basically a revised submission package that's the culmination of all the meetings we've had to date with both the design review board, responses to the Beta peer review comments to date. Everything that we've been through in this room in terms of design has been incorporated into this set, so that's, it's the summary document that captures all of it, in addition to the revised construction management plan that incorporates the commentary from our meetings with you and the Beta comments as well. So that has, that has also been provided. So it's, it's not just one village, it's all the villages. We've applied all of those design principles to each of, each of the components, so that should be comprehensive and ready for review.
Okay. And, you know, board members, you ought to be prepared for that, the construction management plan at the next meeting. So we've got, we're making some progress on the outline.
We're working our way down through the, sorry, F, just F to L.
We were doing F.
I know, weren't I?
Yep, correct. We'd end up with the school bus waiting areas.
Yep.
You're just, where are we in Conservation Commission?
We just met with them prior to coming here. Essentially, there aren't really any outstanding Concom issues, they just wanted to make sure that we got through, through the planning process and got the clean, clean Beta letter.
Okay.
So they've continued the meeting until seven twenty-five as well, so we'll meet with them again.
So we'll get them after.
At the same time.
Okay.
And, but as John said, they seem to be happy with the plans, they have a final set of plans as well, a final set of stormwater, the complete package, and they are relying on the Beta review letter, and they've asked us to provide that when we have it, so...
Okay. Could you provide us information on where you are on your five thousand feet? You know, you get five thousand feet of replicant, or wetland impact. How much, how much is used up on the north side is kind of the question. Where are we on the accounting?
I can get that from VHB, VHB is one of the people who track that.
That would be very helpful.
Are you thinking of East Main Street?
Yes. Well, I think we've been doing this for nine years, we've probably figured this out. Okay. I think we'll leave that one open, but we'll... It doesn't sound like there's any major, is there any major concerns of members of the boards that are coming out of the Concom wetland area?
I think that mostly the wetland stuff has been handled, and the construction road takes a lot of the stress off the road. You know, to redo stormwater management planning, it's all seems to be coming along. But I did not meet this week with, or last week with my counterpart, so I haven't got any feedback directly, so my bad. Should be okay.
Okay. We had town department and head and board comments.
I was on there before I came on board, so I don't know.
I don't think, I mean, they've been in the memo for the last...
Yeah, it's been the same one since the beginning, so I don't know if there's been any...
I don't think we've gotten anything new from that area.
No.
And I think we've incorporated most of the, most of the ones that we have had in the letters.
I can, I'll just double check it.
Are we expecting feedback through our board selectmen and place and fire departments on the, what's it called, contingency planning for the gas?
All right.
From the peer reviews, from what, have they reviewed that or is that just up to us?
It's really just up to us, I mean, we got the report from the selectman on the vapor dispersion area. As I think we might have mentioned, it's up to the selectmen to maybe rebuild the barrier on Wilson Street that was identified in that report as a safety hazard, and that's in their purview. And we'll hopefully mitigate the vapor area and have a lot more information on the thermal for our next review.
Well, we are expecting the fire chief to comment on it.
And then, and now that we have that, we're giving it to the fire chief to make some comments on it, so...
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to skip over the Beta report on outstanding items, because until you've relooked at the plans, that's a meaningless point at this point, you know.
Yeah, we've had discussions with all of us ongoing and their verbal communication and the response letter they submitted previously.
I don't know what...
They've stated that they've addressed everything, but as you're saying, we need to go back through...
I don't know whether it makes sense to start with a new letter, because you almost got a whole set of new plans.
Yeah, I think it does, I mean, I think the last letter that we got back was sort of closing out comments that had been addressed, addressing new comments.
I mean, if there's, if there's stuff, if there's stuff that continues on...
We have to go back, yeah, we have to go back and make sure things that were said were going to be addressed or reflected, and I'm sure they are, but we'll go back and do that as a matter of course.
Yeah, okay, I'm just...
But I agree, I think a new letter is...
All ones that are closed out, we don't necessarily need the paper.
Yeah, yeah.
We're killing enough trees with this project as it is, you know. Let's see. Buildable revised map, I think we're all set on where that is for this project.
I think they provided a revised buildable area map.
We have one, I don't know if we've provided it. So we haven't, as we've been making these, these changes to all the houses, the shifts and all that, we've been tweaking this, the buildable area map as well. We've reviewed that through the process, and we'll make sure that you've got the final updated buildable area map, make sure nothing's continuing to change, but it's everything that we've continued to present relative to the reduction of the, of the buildable area from what was previously proposed.
Okay. So that's kind of the action item on that, is just to get the latest and greatest map at the end so that we...
Yep.
We'll have to attach it to the special permit decision anyway, so... Okay. Traffic analysis and future studies. Trying to remember exactly what we had, the idea and what's going on with this one. I think, I think what we were thinking about is we get a opportunity at site plan review to look at traffic at the approval. And sometimes it's kind of tough to figure out what, what the traffic's like at the beginning of the whole process. I mean, it's, there's no actual experience, per se, I don't know. When we wrote the master plan special permit, it was supposed to be in sections.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to say there is defined timelines in the master plan special permit. For instance, I think we just did one six months ago, maybe, or something like that. I know there's another one that comes up, I'll pick a timeline maybe a year from now. So they are prescribed in the master plan special permit.
Okay, when you write the conditions, we want to make sure we can, I think, continue that process.
Okay.
Talking about traffic analysis, I guess there's been a couple of not too nice accidents right there at the intersection at this point. I've heard from several folks that live in that area that, wow, did you see that one? So I...
You're talking about East Main.
East Main and Legacy. I don't know whether it's a speed-related issue or what.
I think it's speed, actually, because I've stood out there, I see cars go by fifty miles an hour. So it's actually quite dangerous how fast people drive. I mean, it's shocking when you stand out on that sidewalk and you've probably seen a jam. I think we need to patrol that more or put up some slow down signs or something.
Probably eventually going to need a traffic signal, right?
I think, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so just so everybody knows, we actually have run conduits on all four corners under the street, and we have put handholds in, because the last thing we want to do is dig up the street all over again a few years from now. But the traffic count, believe it or not, is not high enough to warrant a traffic light, the state wouldn't approve it. I think the traffic count now is under sixteen thousand per day, and it has to get over eighteen, nineteen thousand.
Yeah, but after Legacy Farm has built, the traffic will...
I'm not so sure it's going to hit the number.
I don't think the amount of traffic, I mean, I travel that road every day, and when I come down Legacy Farms, take a right onto Main Street, it's clear. I look to my left, it's clear, and halfway through the turn, someone comes around that curve, and they're doing forty miles an hour, which is the limit. It's a speed thing, it's not...
Could you take it down to thirty, right, extend the town?
I think if you find a thirty-five, if the cars go at forty-five, fifty, it's a problem.
It, yeah, it's just, it's a speed thing, it's not, it's not a amount of traffic, I've almost been hit there several times.
They do that with, on one thirty-five, they have a thirty-five mile an hour zone, it's actually, you know, a quick time...
Well, I've seen in some towns where they have that flashing light when you go out too fast. It's very effective, it's, I want to just say, makes you slow down.
That's true, a lot of times, they just need to know, they're unaware of that signal, and those signs would help. And I would suggest that if you do account on the intersection of Legacy Farms and East Main, you'll find a similar amount of press work in East Main.
The what? I didn't hear the last...
You'll find a similar amount of accidents at Prescott and East Main. It's just that East Main is, can be a very fast-moving road, people trying to exit. They caught everyone's foot, and I think that those signs, those flashing signs, we put them up in Southborough that said, this is the speed and this is how fast you're going. A lot of people don't want you to go that fast, but they do. I think some of those signs might help.
The posted permanent speed limit coming up East Main Street by Ray Street, between Prescott and Ray, posted permanent twenty miles an hour, coming through the center of town, posted twenty miles an hour. Unless you're on a horse, you're not going twenty miles an hour.
Police officer right there, put a police officer out there for a period of time, start putting a few tickets, people will then, they'll get the message.
Well, it can't be every place at all times. So, but there are, they make some really innovative traffic, traffic safety preventative signal signs. Maybe we could talk to the police department about that and see if they could get something up there.
What's the speed limit in front of your house, Jane?
Probably forty, forty-five, I think it's forty.
Forty is forty, that's not thirty-five. Until you get to the town where it drops to twenty-five.
Yeah, I bet it's forty.
I mean...
And, yeah, and they go sixty, I mean, not all of them, but it's just that one, one that will catch you.
Maybe that's someplace where the town, I would start thinking about thirty-five or...
Yeah, you're going to have to get the speed up, but it could be, it could be...
Just something to consider, the state is the only body organized to set speed limit.
Right.
So you have to go through a process to actually, you can't arbitrarily just say thirty-five. So to some degree, you don't have the control to do that, but it's just something to bear in mind.
Correct.
You have the authority to put the flashing sign.
You could only do it as a warning or an advisory type sign, but that's not enforceable in terms of ticketing. So, so there's a dimer there that's very, very common.
Could we request a, what is the traffic safety audit, we the town? I'm trying to remember the, the name of that, the traffic safety audit with the potential of reducing the...
You could, you've got to be careful what you wish for.
Yeah, good luck with that.
If you do a speed study and it's coming in at forty-five, then, you know, they'll post it on, on the eighty-fifth percentile speed of the study. So, so it may, it may suggest that forty's accurate, it may suggest forty-five is okay, you just have to be careful with how you approach it.
It could come in worse than what you're hoping for, is what it's saying.
What, meaning?
You may be hoping for twenty-five, and they might break that thirty-five or forty.
So it's, it's a tricky, it's a tricky situation.
Well, they wouldn't increase it any more than it is, would they?
They should, no, they should.
I think you need to factor in the accident data as well.
Well, that's, that's what this, this traffic safety audit does, they look at, there's about ten people from the state that come around, because they did it downtown, and, you know, they will write you thirty pages of what might make it better.
Yeah, those are typically done when, as part of an intersection design.
Will the state do one or... Road safety audits, they tend to be driven by accident clusters.
Yeah.
So if you're having two accidents there, that might trigger a road safety audit. They probably don't have all the new data in their database.
They would be looking for fatalities or anything?
Not necessarily, I mean, it, it could be, it could be just a frequency of a particular kind of accident. For example, if it was left turns or right turns and there was a corrective action, that would be the purpose of the road safety audit, to sort of look for those trends and themes and so on.
Mr. Chairman, should we cable this? Do you think, through the legacy folks?
Well, it's, one of the solutions would be for them to fix it, if there was a, determined that a fix was needed.
Right.
I'm not sure we're there, but I'm not sure we're getting a recommendation, I'm just hearing, more accidents are hitting that, that corner, and, you know, is there something we should be doing to, yeah?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to look into that flash and speed sign if you'd like me to. Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to look into that flash and speed sign if you'd like me to.
Well, the town owns a couple of them, the mobile ones.
There are some solar-powered ones that are on single posts.
This is permanent.
And it's permanently put on the road.
Okay.
So one says your speed should be going thirty-five, but you are actually going fifty.
Got you.
And.
It does slow people down.
It does slow people down because most people don't realize that they're going that fast.
Or people have a radar detector on it and it probably gives them a radar detector.
That only works if there's a cop on the other end with a radar gun and we don't have enough of them all around.
The sign's got a radar detector.
Yeah, but I don't know if it's enough to pick it up.
They slow me down.
I think you need the reader and the speed limit, because if I see that reader and it says I'm going forty-five and I know the speed limit's forty-five, I'm not gonna slow down. You gotta have the thirty-five mile an hour speed limit plus the sign, in my opinion.
I'm just saying.
Okay, well, we'll look at the.
It's an option. It's not the end-all solution. They're not expensive and they're not instructive.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, where are we, traffic? Next item was on the list was community impacts and mitigation. I think. I think what we probably need to revisit what we had in the agreement. And just make sure that we have not triggered any more of the events that are in the host community agreement.
Elaine has a very accurate. She does. She has a very thorough, every time I need, I have a question, she sends it to me and it's updated and it's very, and it just, everything from the master plan special permit that is an ongoing requirement with a, with a timing threshold associated with it.
Okay, let's try to get that updated list from her, just to make sure we haven't bumped into anything with that. Okay, so then we're kind of back to the other open items.
Did you go over it then, or?
What?
Master plan special permit?
Well, I think that's that same, same list, I guess. In the host community agreement, design guidelines.
Okay, thank you.
I sense the design guidelines we're okay with, because they were fairly general anyway, so. Unless anyone had any objections to on that, I think we're all set on the design guidelines. Going back to affordable units on the project, we received from Roy, from Mark, a list of Pulte affordable units. We'll be checking the references. I also was at a state meeting last week and one of the members of the Water Resources Commission is sitting next to me, was the representative from Housing and Economic Affairs. And she gave me the name of a guy that came back from vacation today, that supposedly is the state authority on this, how well it works. I didn't have the nerve to ask him another question on his first day back, but tomorrow's his second day back. And that won't bother me at all. So we'll get that information to the board hopefully soon. I'm just looking where we have other pieces that we should be working on, because I don't really want to let everyone out that early.
Mr. Chairman, have you thought about the construction management plan this evening?
Not until we've had time to bate his comments and whatever. I went over it very quickly in my comments and from our meeting, I thought, I saw about ten percent of what I had thought about, so.
Can I just say something to that point? I didn't review it, just as a matter of principle. The planning board and the planning department have set up a deadline to submit items, so that there is time for review. And it was submitted after the deadline, so as a matter of principle, I did not review it.
That's fine. If I could just make a response to that. So there was no disrespect to the board that we submitted on Thursday rather than Tuesday? We were well aware of the Tuesday deadline for this meeting. But with what we submitted, as Matt said, it was a comprehensive, full set of site plans that really encompassed everything we've talked about today. So we thought it was more important to get everything in there with review time and make it as accurate as we could be. And also with the construction management plan, there was a lot of oversight, there was a lot of internal review, and there was a lot of thought put into it. So again, we wanted to get it right and thorough and comprehensive, rather than rush it in to beat some deadline the day after Fourth of July, when we were all struggling with our schedules as well. So I respect that you didn't look at it and we're happy to talk about it at the next meeting and, you know, we just, that was, that was, that's really our thought process.
Mr. Chairman, can I just respond?
Yeah.
I do want to say I appreciate having the extra time to review it for the next meeting. Because there's a lot of information and having that extra time, I do appreciate having it.
Yeah, and we now all have paper copies, because we got those today. And some of us can't read big plans on our small laptops, so that helps a little bit. So we're, we've got a lot of homework, yeah.
Can I, it sounds like we're open agenda right now.
Yeah, we are.
Can I bring up an item that I've discussed in the past, but I'm not sure of the status of it? I feel strongly that, I know you had said that the Legacy North and Legacy South roads are a done deal and we missed the vote on that, but I really would like to see curbs put in on the sidewalk side, the non-drainage side. And I don't, I'm not sure that we did miss that vote. The way I understand it, there was a bond for that road, that, sorry, state funding. Somebody correct me, it was like five hundred thousand or something like that?
More than that.
To build that road. So, I mean, I don't know how the builder feels about that concession.
Yeah, the concern I think that you're having is that we're getting a lot of erosion on parts of the.
Erosion, aesthetics. I just, I don't think we're gonna be able to throw grass in that little gap there. It's gonna be covered with sand.
That would be quite problematic, because the drainage, the pitch of the road, the low impact development standards, everything that was designed for.
I'm only talking about the high side, the high side of the road, where the sidewalks are, so it wouldn't affect the drainage.
Well, it does, it does, because some areas of pitches one way, some areas of pitches the other way. And I can discuss that with the H B, but I think there would be really.
Sorry, with who, the H?
V H B, the engineers that designed the whole road.
Okay.
The, my concern is that the design of the runoff, the whole road is based on the concept that it is. The midistaticity curving, it changes everything relative to the runoff. Just saying nothing of what it would do to the height of the road relative to the height of the sidewalk. There's a litany of reasons why that could be problematic. Now, it might be even when we do the finished coat of paving, I don't know if you've seen some instances where when you pave a road, there's this little curled edge on the shoulders. It's up about.
Little mini berm?
It's like a mini berm. The gentleman that I'm talking about, they've pulled these using some of their.
Cape Cod berm sometimes if you do it.
It's about, oh, maybe this high and about this wide. It's big, in essence, think about it like when you're spreading the asphalt, you roll everything with that last outside inch or two, and that sort of creates a mini berm.
That's how Hopkins did most of their streets in the eighties and the nineties.
Sorry to interrupt, but I don't think we did it the right way the first time, and I would like to do it the right way the second time. And I do the main berm, do an actual berm, in my opinion.
Yeah, and you were saying, I can look into that, but I don't think we'll be able to do it with the design of the road.
Let's, let's, let's look at areas where it's obvious the seating is not working. You know, I mean, there's, you know, if it's areas where we've been trying to grow grass on that street for.
You're talking about Legacy South?
South and north. I mean, maybe we have beta folks kind of go through there too, because you'd obviously want to do that before you do the finished coat on whatever you do. But, you know, if, if there's areas that, you know, particularly on the south side, if we haven't grown grass in two years or three years, you know, it's just not gonna happen.
Mr. Chairman, most of the, that's majority of the south side you can grow grass on it. The problem has been with all the construction, the construction vehicles driving on both shoulders. And that's one of the things we're not gonna be doing on the north side, because as you recall, on the south side, those large trucks and machines are running up and down the whole length of the road. So that's been a little bit problematic. The other thing is that the main entrance of Legacy, all the cars, mothers picking up their kids parked there. And that's the reason why the grass is not growing there. I think we've alleviated that problem on the north side by these drop-off areas. But I think on Legacy South, near East Main Street, we have to do one or two things. We're gonna have to pave an extra foot or so there where the cars pull off the edge, or we're gonna have to live without that grass when all the cars parked there. Now, if the school bus comes through later on, that won't be a problem, but currently, all the mothers sit there waiting to pick up their kids.
Yeah, there should be not as much of a reason for people to park there once, once.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's the purpose of a curb, prevent people from following up on the side of the road too.
The problem then is that you park in the middle of the street.
You're gonna park there no matter what.
Well, once the final paving gets done on that south side, at least, and that intersection gets cut to the right motion per the plans, then it'd be probably a little bit better shape.
So you think we gotta beta, take a look at that?
Well, let me have the H B look at it, because they designed it.
Okay, thank you. Anything.
Okay. I'm not sure where we can go from now, given that we got this huge data dump. And that's what's kind of next to talk about, I think. I think we've gotten, we've gotten through just about everything. Oh, we received an agreement from Andy and Crowd at Pulte, and that, you know, I think you all got. Oh, came in, yes.
The agreement, yeah, for Fifth Street?
Yep, and it sounds like that'd be something that we put in the, in the condition.
Sounds like both parties are happy, right?
Yep, that's what I read in it. So, for our next get-together, we got beta, oh, go ahead.
Just one suggestion, I'm not gonna wanna keep everyone here, but does it make sense perhaps for the applicant to give you a briefing of the construction management plan tonight while they're here? I don't know if you're ready to. It might help with your general interpretation. We've seen it, we have commented on it, they've responded to the comments. So we think it's ready for discussion, but just a suggestion.
Well, we could.
If I could respond?
Yeah.
I appreciate you wanting to get things moving along, but you work for us.
No, no, it's just a, just a suggestion, that's all.
But my point is though, I support what Brian said earlier, and no offense to you guys. I'd like that you sent everything and it's all here, all new members especially, this would very much help them. But us, all of us need to review it, and frankly, it's a little bit like a, putting a chopper up or digesting this information. We just don't have time to do it if it happens after our deadline. It's not, it's not about the Fourth of July and stuff, you know, we're all, we're all busy with our laughter, you know? So we're doing our best we can.
I think maybe the discussion will go better complete if we just hit it one time and just go, we'll start at page one of it and we'll just go right on through with everyone's comments and, you know, hopefully we'll get through parts a bit faster than others. I know I've gone through it. Most of my comments are probably the same. They've all heard my comments, so, and that's usually a lot of them. So hopefully they'll have rebuttals to whatever they didn't want to incorporate. Let's see. So we've got beta review and construction management and that whole drawing package with a new letter. We got Jennifer working on conditions.
Conditions, you want the mitigation spreadsheet up to date, the copy sent out. And then you want the peer review for the L N G taken care of.
Priority, if we get the L N G straightened out, that'll be the number one item. We'll know that before that meeting, and we'll solve, work on that. We also need to work on conditions for the two master plan special permits. But that'll be after the L N G stuff gets sorted out. So we ought to make sure that we have all the latest and greatest documents that support both of them as far as the plans that get attached to it. And we gotta make sure we get the conditions written such that somebody can understand them. So anyway, that'll make things fun. What other action items, action items for the board, because we got a lot to review. So. What time did I say? Eight forty-five?
Eight forty-five on the twenty-fifth.
Anyone else have it? Anyone from the audience have anything today?
When will the construction plans and the drawing package be done on the site?
Soon as I can do it. I will make every effort tomorrow to do it, but maybe on Wednesday, maybe.
Either that or. Andy, do you want us to email them to you? Yeah, I probably have an email somewhere, but.
He just offered to email them too, if you want.
Yeah, we email all the time.
Just last. How are you doing on your wires, your electricity?
The site has pole wires tomorrow.
Congratulations. And they're gonna add a few more feet of underground conduit, obviously?
Probably about two hundred feet.
So when you say pole wires, what are they gonna be doing?
So we have, we have two, it was called PM United switches, and a big transformer is, there's one on the other end of the site.
Okay.
We've already extended the conduits under Franklin up to an existing pole. And then on the far side, we're gonna extend existing conduits to another pole a little bit up Wilson Street. That's probably a hundred fifty feet additional conduit. What they're gonna start doing tomorrow is there are manholes in the street, about every five hundred feet. So they're gonna start pulling three cables, they're about all that big around, through the whole length of the road. And they'll tie those to the transformer switches and then eventually tie it to the poles.
How do they do that? Do they run a long snake or something?
No, no, they get it, well, first off, we gotta put in about twenty miles of what's called mule tape. And what they do is they tie their cable to the mule tape, it's on a big roller truck. And they pull the cable through, and once they pull the cable through, then they tie on the big heavy cable to the cable, the wire cable, and the big truck has a big roller on it and they pull it through. A whole, they'll pull it five hundred feet at a time.
Nice.
Yeah, big spools.
Yeah.
Heavy-duty stuff.
So that mule tape is gone now, so there's no way to put the mule in?
Oh, no, no, once you pull the mule tape, you just throw it away.
Somebody, somebody from the Eversearch probably has a garage full of it.
It's actually, it's actually pretty expensive. It's got a twenty-five hundred pound pole brush on it.
Oh, yeah, it's good stuff. All right.
Okay, looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to eight forty-five on July. Twenty-five.
So move.
Move to second and further discussion, seeing none, how do you vote? I oppose, I'm gonna stay in motion carry. Thank you very much. Let's see. I think we're into sidewalks at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Segue, segue from our commentary score discussion.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Okay. We got a lot of paperwork from our last meeting, which talked about sidewalks. And we got the survey results. I think the number one was West Main Street and Main Street, West Main. It was thirty, ten percent of the, more than ten percent of the comments came from, on that subject. Chestnut Street also got a lot. More on Ash Street. Granite and Lumber. And then Hayden Row. Wood Street got a few, and Fruit Street. I think what we're seeing, a lot of this is there are fairly large streets that are, that people are getting concerned with.
Busy streets, too.
Busy streets.
Cars drive down them a lot.
And, you know, the rest, the rest of them, the onesie twosies areas. West Main Street was Upton to School Street. School Street to Oakhurst, Oakhurst to Priscilla, Priscilla to the Downey Street, Downey to Price Chopper, et cetera. The Downey to Price Chopper was fairly high on that list of streets.
Yeah.
People might remember when we approved Price Chopper, we looked at that area. And the only way you can get a sidewalk there is if you take all the beautiful pine trees off of the house that's right on the corner of Downey and West Main Street.
Can't do it on the other side? I haven't looked at it at all.
It doesn't make, yeah.
There's nothing on that side, yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the real purpose is to get, to get from Downey Street to Price Chopper, which I think would be, would be used a lot.
Right.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Living in that area, I've noticed, obviously the warm weather, but a higher number this year than I have remembered in the past year walking along that route. Women with children and women with carriages on the street, it scares the living daylights out of me with the traffic. You know, luckily, you know, they tend to be walking on that side, and I've, I've seen the heavier in the afternoon commute. But it's getting, the usage along that stretch, as stuff develops closer, is getting heavier and heavier. People walking in.
You're referring to West Main Street?
West Main Street.
Between the, the Price Chopper and.
Probably going Downey and even up a little bit. And then you add in the people who are fishing on either side, you know, which.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, um, put together a one-page notes of just some numbers of what it's costing us for what we did and what we planned, like, a few samples of what we could do. Can I?
Yeah, go please.
Just so we can discuss this. So, the, the first, I don't know if you guys get it, but the first section is what we completed in two thousand five, two thousand sixteen. Ash Street, I got these notes from, I think, West Town Meeting or something like that. Basically, the cost per foot of the first line item Ash Street, I think, was a little expensive because it must've been cement, where all the rest of these were asphalt. But it basically comes down to about a hundred fifty dollars a foot, so we're paying for all these streets. So, it's quite a sum of money. I just took a few things, samples, obviously, we're gonna vote to get our streets, but for the proposed. Um, I know we talked about doing Ash Street all the way down. So what I did is, I just counted telephone poles. You know, this wasn't an exact science, just to get us a rough feel, and assumed that telephone poles a hundred and twenty-five feet apart. So, to finish Ash Street, it looks like it would be like four sixty-eight plus two sixty-two. So it would be like, actually, I put that example all the way down the bottom, actually. For the total cost, even the proposed, I believe, yeah, the last, the first two were what we already did, two fifty-five, one forty-nine. And if we wanted to do it, four sixty-eight, two sixty-two. So it'd be about a million dollars for the, I don't know, a mile and a half of Ash Street, whatever it is. So, it does get expensive. I had talked before about maybe we could hire a couple more DPW people and do our own sidewalks, since we have all the equipment. That's, you know, that's something completely separate, but this, I just wanted to throw out some, some numbers so we could, we could see, like, it's not gonna be cheap to do all these sidewalks. It's gonna be expensive.
One of, one of the tools that you might think about instead of count poles, which is a kinda interesting way, on the GIS site, if you haven't got to that, it's, it's, if, uh, it's on the, the town website. When it comes up, it's kinda in the lower left.
Okay.
And it's got, it's an interactive map, and so you can get, like, the drawings that Jennifer gave me earlier today, I think.
Yep.
Somewhere. Let's see, those would've been on the school, right? So, basically, you can get in this GIS.
Yep.
Well, they also have a, a device, if you go down to the bottom part, and it'll measure or it'll calculate areas for you. So you can just click, click, click on it and points in, in, in. It's, it's kind of a, it's, it's a nice tool. And not only that, but when you, and I guess we're in the education mode a little bit. You can click on every one of the properties, find out who the owner is, whether it's assessed, you can, you can find out everything.
Does that go to that Patriot Properties?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I've used that before.
So it, it all, it all links together. I caution you that certain lots, including my own, the frontage numbers are all screwed up, so it's not, uh.
Not the most accurate information.
Yeah, but we agree for what I just, instead of counting poles, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, particularly if the streets are straight, but even if it, even if it's a curved street, you can, it'll just keep taking, uh, an additional number on it as you go.
John, through the chair. Just something related to sidewalks, and it might not, it might be true, may not be true. But our power came up, is on DeCarlo, there's a wrecked panel truck that at night has been parking there for about six weeks, one or two nights a week.
Where, where's this?
On DeCarlo, as soon as you come off West Main, driver gets out, gets in another car and leaves. And it's parked on the sidewalk. And I have called the police numerous times, 'cause I said it's parked on the sidewalk. And there, I had two policemen telling me, it's not illegal in Hopkinton to park on the sidewalk.
I've heard that.
Which seems to, kind of.
I thought there was an ordinance for that.
But if it's an unlicensed, unregistered, it's not registered property, then it can't park overnight on the sidewalk.
Yeah, it's not.
But that's maybe the my street.
But it, it's interesting if it's, and I said, go back and check, because I can't believe that you can pull up at any port of town, park on a sidewalk, it seems to ruin the whole idea of a sidewalk.
Yeah.
If you could park on the sidewalk. And then force people to walk in the street.
There wouldn't be a zoning board by law, but it's kinda one of those, it's kinda.
No, it would probably be a general.
I couldn't find it in the general, but I've, I found it in traffic.
Oh, the traffic rates.
The state, I can't find it in a, in materials from the state. So the manual to get your driver's license, et cetera, it says in Massachusetts, you're not allowed to park on a sidewalk. Uh, but I can't find where.
What statute that?
What statute it's in. But it just seemed odd. I had two, I had one who said, when I'm, of the three I spoke to, one said, let me go back and check, because he said, what you're telling me seems to make sense. But I had two of them saying, now in Hopkington, you're allowed to park. So I said, you mean on Main Street in the center of town, I can park on the sidewalk and that's fine? And they just kinda looked at me.
Well.
Say Robert to take a picture.
Yeah. We, we might, we might suggest a general bylaw to, to town meeting, like we do for other ones. And, you know, that type of thing doesn't have to go through Zach, 'cause it's not his only advisory.
It just seems really odd.
You know.
And I look, many other jurist municipalities have specific, you're not permitted to park on a sidewalk.
Well, then, so we can copy the bylaw from somebody else, so, so it'll be easy to write.
Can you drive on a sidewalk?
Or you can cross it when you're going on your driveway.
You can park on it.
You can ride a bike on the sidewalk, but not. Jennifer told us that, right? It has to be a city.
I ne- never.
I thought you told.
Oh, no, Elaine mentioned that, when we had that meeting.
In the city.
Well, in, in a, in a urban area, so like, in the downtown, you cannot, because that's considered urban.
Oh.
But if you were, like, out somewhere in the outskirts of town, you could ride on the sidewalk, ride your bike on the sidewalk.
Okay, so let's, let's kinda talk for a couple more minutes on sidewalks.
I wanna reply to David, um, thank you for what is together.
Yeah.
And I, I agree, we should find, uh, more affordable ways to build, uh, simple sidewalks.
Yeah.
We don't, I know there's ADA compliance regulations, uh, but if we don't, it's, it's, if, if the difference is not having any sidewalk and having more, just an asphalt walkway or something, and when, and where we need to widen them or make them more cement-like, then.
I, I think the ones we did were really basic, 'cause they're asphalt, they're on the side of the road, they look nice, they have a curve.
Sure.
But I'm just surprised they're so expensive. I mean, a hundred fifty dollars a foot, take a ten-foot section, that's fifteen hundred dollars. It seems very expensive.
It does.
And there's no state bylaw that says we, they can't, on a major thoroughfare, the state picks that up? The state picks it up, or at least gives us money for it, to help us with that?
The state doesn't do, getting, getting grants. Occasionally, there'll be like a, a grant for sidewalks, if somebody that obviously does sidewalks must be connected or something. Maybe, maybe I shouldn't say that, but.
Uh, if we, if we adopted a complete streets policy, we could probably get some grant funding for sidewalks, but then that's a whole other thing.
And then, but you'll usually spend more money on that to, I mean.
Right, because then, yeah, the whole design of yourself.
Complete Streets basically says you gotta be able to drive, bike, and, and walk on everything. And that's, that's, that's one of the latest state big buzzwords. For example, that the downtown corridor will be complete streets. They won't fund anything without it.
Nowadays, that's true.
I, if I look at this list, I think we oughta be going for, I'll say, big, big things.
Yep.
And I think with the new school, that Quetden Row kinda hops higher in my list. I mean, having it, you know, it is on one side of the road, but, but all the kids on the east side could potentially be walking to that.
Yeah.
Right now, it stops at EMC Park, if you're coming from the center of town.
On the east side?
On the east side.
Yeah.
Right, it stops at EMC.
I think you guys are thinking that we should run it both sides all the way down, right?
At least to Chestnut.
Chestnut, yeah. Seems to make sense.
And, and maybe that, 'cause our, our priorities, the last time we set a priority was, let's look at school-related walking stuff first. And maybe we'll get, as an action item, we'll get the, that, that map of where we, kids might be able to walk. Another, another way to get to EMC Park is off of Blueberry. We have unfinished roads that, a path through the woods could, could be done to get, I'll say, all the people that are using the Ash Street sidewalks to go to the center school could now get over to EMC Park and then over to, to the school, too.
Something would light on it too, right?
Is that something the Trails Committee can work on?
Trails Committee could work on that.
That's why it's important to know where your walkers are coming from, because if your walkers are coming from that area of town, then a sidewalk in Hayden Row, it's gonna do any good if they're gonna come the back way.
To Blueberry.
Correct.
Right.
Would, would be interesting if you continued to pass the school down to Water Fresh, right? 'Cause people, I can envision people.
Walking to Water Fresh.
Walking from Water.
The only thing about that is I think that side of the road, it drops off a lot, so it's, it's gonna be, need to add fill. It might be, I mean, we need to do it, but we need to look at that kinda stuff, it, it might be a little bit more expensive for that area.
And then, and then another one is, you know, we've got sidewalks that are now pretty nice to the Lumber Street and West Main Street. And it's gonna be relatively expensive to get under the underpass, but there's so many people that would like to get through that intersection. You know.
South Street or?
Connect, get to South Street, you know, or get to Downey Street.
Why would it be expensive to get under, 'cause don't they, don't they have built a sidewalk under the overpass?
No, no, they didn't. They refused to do that.
Oh, it's that one there?
They refused to do that at the time. And the town asked for it, I believe, according to Elaine, and they refused to.
I don't know, but that will be expensive. That's a lot of infrastructure.
And so you're gonna have to take, you have to do what they did with the Milford Bike Trail, when it goes under four ninety-five.
Yeah.
And kinda cut out the, the slope. And put in a retaining wall.
Yeah, they're doing it on my way home in Berlin on sixty-two right now, and they've been doing it for six months. It's a lot of work and a lot of infrastructure.
What if we just put a sidewalk area there, and not a sidewalk, but like a crosswalk, just striped it?
If it's on Cross South Street, it'd be dangerous.
Down beneath the bridge.
Underneath the bridge.
Is what you're talking about. It would be less, would that, that be a lot cheaper?
I don't think it's wide enough.
No.
I, I, I'm sure that there isn't enough room for lanes.
Yeah, it's tight, you know? But yeah, and you have to consider, you're gonna have two hundred and eighty apartments going in on Lumber Street, very soon. Those people are gonna be walking everywhere.
Well, they can walk in town now.
Yeah.
Right.
And if they wanted to walk to Price Chopper.
They wanna walk to Price Chopper. Who walks to Price Chopper?
You'd be surprised.
So where?
There would be.
See if they'll help us out.
So where does it stop, Ken? Is, is, in front of the Starbucks, or?
Actually, it's, it starts, it stops at Cumberland Farms.
Right.
At the Cumberland Farms, so we can look down at Cumberland Farms to Price Chopper.
And it's not gonna be cheap in front of Cumberland Farms either, because that's a, a real, real mess.
That's a tight site, too.
But it's, I, I think it's doable, but everything's doable, I guess.
If you have the money.
That will cost.
Well, you know, if, if you look at the results of the survey, West Main Street, at least a segment of it, gets, gets there. There's always been a lot of support to get the, the link across four ninety-five. And, you know. That and the other thing is, I still think, all the little areas where you're missing sidewalk in front of one.
I did try to throw that down, 'cause you were talking about Hayden Row, so I threw that one little section on there.
Where's this?
That might only cost like twenty-seven thousand dollars, something like that, to do a little two-hundred-foot section.
Yeah.
Someone mentioned, uh, on the original Elm Street, uh, between Elm Street and, uh, West Elm Street, there could be an underground walkway, like there is in Milford, but, uh, that might be easier.
Say again, where are you?
Where Elm Street used to go all the way to, um.
Oh, 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 okay, I see what you're saying.
Might go underground, dig a tunnel under four ninety-five?
That's what, that's what I did in Milford. Milford to, uh.
That's out of the box thinking.
Well, it is, it's not my idea, so.
No, not, not, not harassing you, it's.
It's, it's an idea I've heard before, and it's like, and I'd forgotten about, hadn't thought about until you guys were talking about the underpass. I thought there had sidewalks in the underpass, but I guess if there isn't, then that's, uh, might be easier just to do the dig in.
Or you can go over.
The walkway, walkway to nowhere.
You look at this, the, the, the Hayden Row one, the schools, that's clearly high visibility, safety, everything. The second one is, um, you know, going to Price Chopper, I think, once the muse goes in there, people are gonna look for places to walk.
What goes in there?
Muse, right, which is all the, the surrounding properties.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty. Apartments on the number.
Two hundred and eighty.
Two hundred and eighty, I, I, that's, there's a lot of people, and they like to walk.
They like to walk, yeah.
Gym, going south, you've got Price Chopper that way, you can walk into town. And that becomes then kinda nice.
Yeah, that would be nice amenity for the town.
Plus, there'll be the, that pool, that rec center that'll be.
For the town proper.
Yeah, yeah, you have the gym, that'll be opening up soon.
Okay.
I think everyone is gonna go to, any of those places has been dry.
If you have a sidewalk there, if you've got a safe way of walking there, people will walk.
Especially the swim club, I think.
The swim, yeah, or the, or the bike.
Or their bike.
You'll jump on a bike.
Even Frank, I'm starting to walk more, which is, you know, really.
Oh my God, put that on camera.
Don't tell my wife.
Well, the center trail helps too. I mean, I never connected the other half, and now you can go all the way down the lump, till it, it cuts through the school, right down through. Right down through. It's, it's a nice little cut through.
Why don't we draft a letter recommending Hayden Row and West Main Street as, in, in small sections where we're missing a piece?
Yeah.
I mean, there's lots where one or two houses, doesn't matter.
Shouldn't it's not men or?
Yeah, uh, no, it's a DPW.
John, what's going?
DPW, okay.
Yeah. What, what about the idea from, uh, Fruit Street, uh, from Wood Street to the, uh, Fruit Street Fields?
See, I live in that part of town, too, and that's the major cut across there. I know we have important sections, too, but it'd be nice to do something like Cunningham Street, that area. I did throw that down, I hear it's a very short street.
Cunningham's small enough, maybe that's not a lot of traffic. It does get a lot of cut through traffic.
Ton of cut through traffic, yeah.
But, uh, I don't know.
Well, we could stack some things up for future, too.
I mean, we're just looking, we're, you know, to spend more than a million dollars or a million, two million dol, what? I forget what we had the first.
Well, we spent a million dollars on Ash Street. Or, no, no, sorry, it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I did. That was a future, too, so Ash Street.
I mean, you know.
Three, four, it's like almost five.
If you put too big a number, it's never gonna get passed.
Right.
It's gotta be one of those ones that just slides under the, you know.
We'll forget, we want two for the master plan transportation section, it's sort of a long-term.
Yeah.
Sidewalk list or goal, so some of these other ones we could leave for the master plan and say, you know, as funding allows, you know, these are the items we'd like to check off, sort of, so we can continue to think about it that way.
It'll be, it'll be good, though, if we could get like a section and, you know, using the map, get the accurate distance and a rough estimate, sorry.
Sure. Yeah.
Good, like, but you're not, you're not-
Yeah.
This kinda really helps codify the, uh,
The cost.
The cost area.
You look at Marlowe. I mean, you look at the two on the, the response list, though, Hayden, uh, West Main and Chestnut.
Yeah.
Were the top two.
Well, Chestnut, if you get Hayden Row down on the east side, down to Chestnut, then subsequently you can continue that to Ash, right?
It is, it is already, yeah, Chestnut, Chestnut Street goes sidewalk to Wild.
Correct.
So you can get most of the people in that area, but if you wanna get people south of that, you've gotta go all the way down to Smith.
Springwood, you can take it to Spring, that, that captures all the people in, uh, Springwood.
Nobody in Springwood walks, so, just kidding.
Uh, there's a fair number of kids that take bikes down, I think, a little bit, so.
We had that, we had that tried to be done.
Yeah. That's right. Well, right now, there's no, no, we're gonna need to walk, too, 'cause that's the center, so, once that school opens up, that'll be the draw.
Mr. Chairman, when you're done with this discussion, I have one other item that, I have another item that came in late today, so when you're done with this discussion.
Okay, I think, I mean, we're all set for, we'll try to draft a letter for those recommendations.
Hayden Row, Hayden Row, West Main, right?
And, and, and short pieces to-
Yep.
Low hanging fruit.
It's all in place, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of those short pieces are low hanging fruit, too. Complete the network. Okay.
I received an email today from Dave Del Torio. Says while we were providing an update to the Board of Selectmen on the town-wide LED streetlight conversion project, they directed us to reach out to various boards and commissions for input on the project. His final details are currently being worked out with the contractor with replacement of lights to start in a couple months. Would you please discuss this with the planning board, designer view, and store commissions to determine if they have any interest in providing any input or have any comments or questions on the project? If they do, can you find out if they prefer to provide something in writing or include this topic as an agenda item at an upcoming meeting?
Sorry, I missed the beginning of that. LED?
LED streetlight conversion project.
Streetlights, conversion, LED?
Yeah, there was, yes. They save a ton of money.
Okay, I like it.
Some people are concerned that the color is different. I think that's the only negative that I've heard.
We don't have any in town.
There are a couple that have been done as a test case somewhere.
Yeah, but I don't remember where.
I think the Green Committee's been spot working this one.
Yeah, it's the Sustainable Green Committee has been doing it.
The LED lights, they put out different, you can get different hues. I mean, it doesn't have to be a nasty, overly bright white.
I can get warmer ones.
You can get warmer ones and you have different, different intensities.
I think the comment is that LEDs in, in all legacy is LEDs.
Yes.
So, uh, maybe we can get a, a list of where the ones are and we'll put it on our agenda for next meeting.
Did you want, um, one of the members of the Sustainable Green Committee, or Dave Del Torio, to attend that meeting?
I want a sustainable green committee.
No.
I have a member of the Sustainable Green Committee on the board. Did not know that, sorry.
Frank will take the lead.
Okay.
Congratulations, great, thank you. It will say LED lights use less power, uh, and they last longer, if they cost more money, but over time, they're much better value.
So you want a list of potential locations?
Uh, other items for future agenda items, et cetera. We're gonna have to get back to goals one of these days, but this next meeting is-
I think it's on, I have it on for July twenty-fifth, but I can't-
Yeah, we'll probably move that out again, 'cause-
So I also have, we have to get back to the peer review.
Oh, yes.
Too.
Uh, John and I and you and Elaine will meet on that.
Okay.
Sometime soon.
And I did a brief comment.
I've got notes for mine, too, so.
I gotta find my notes. I know I, I did it. I just gotta find the piece of paper that's got them all on.
And I have to get Elaine on the, um, economic development chapter of the master plan, um, I don't have that yet, so.
And we gotta get from Dave Del Torio the engineering estimate for our right turn lane.
I don't think we're gonna get that till the end of July. I believe that was the last email we got.
End of July?
I believe. 'Cause, uh, the gentleman was on vacation and then he had a backlog of other work.
He doesn't sound like the right guy, but maybe he is.
How long have you been waiting for this?
I don't, I haven't been part of that process, so.
Right, because it was before you came on.
I don't think it was that far. But, um, but I can follow up, yeah, on that.